We are going to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. Item 4.1, our broadcast statement, which will be read by our student board member, Halbo.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Monday, December 17th at 8:00 PM, and Wednesday, December 19th at 6:00 PM, and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Thank you, student member Halbo. Item 4.2, the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I am proud to share that the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by students from Ethel Phillips Elementary School. This is a... Yes, give them a round of applause. They are joined tonight by their fearless leader, Danny Hernandez, who I know has been a tireless advocate for families in that community, and yes, he also deserves a round The students we will be hearing from tonight are participating in an innovative program that allows student achievement and enrichment through the form of Saturday School. They also are students who have been deemed social-emotional learning superstars, and this has been a huge focus of the character in academic development at Ethel Phillips under the leadership of Principal Hernandez. I'm proud to say that these are students who are part of 916 Inc., one of our best nonprofit partners. They've been part of the English Learner Conversation Club. They've been part of our after-school programs at the school site. They have fundraised to help ensure that all students have access to our sixth-grade Sly Park field trip, and they are also active participants in our Student Council. So if I can please have you come to the podium, we're excited to recognize you this evening and to have you lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Whoever would like to step forward and pull the mic down so we can hear you. Thank you.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. If you can please stay at the podium, we have an opportunity to present you with certificates for your exemplary leadership and your achievement as social-emotional learning superstars. So I'm going to come down and share certificates with you, and we'll take a quick photo. Daniel Kealan? And then finally, Antonio Soto. We're also pleased to be joined tonight by two of our former board members. If I can have Board Member Diana, former Board Member Diana Rodriguez, stand up and we can recognize her. And at this time, I have the opportunity to present a special certificate to our immediate outgoing Board Member, Board Member Jay Hanson, if you can also stand up. We also have a former Board Member, Board Member Rob Fong, so we definitely want to recognize you. Council Member Shinir. Assembly Member McCarty. And I could go on and on. But we want to take the opportunity to use the next few minutes to recognize outgoing Board Member Jay Hanson with an apple for six years of stellar service to Sacramento City Unified School District. Before we open it up to a few remarks from Board Member Hanson as well as the public, I want to share what has most impressed me about Board Member Hanson has been his commitment to Lea Tata Floyd. When I first became a Board Member and visited school sites across the district, I was astonished by the poverty and the inequity at Lea Tata Floyd. I saw under Board Member Hanson a relentless advocacy to ensure that there was after-school programming, trauma-informed training, and more recently, the Floyd Farms partnership with the support of Kevin McCarty, which I believe will be a beacon of light in the region. In addition to that, Board Member Hanson was able to reopen Washington Elementary in the heart of Sacramento City Unified and Sacramento City, and I am proud to say that the school is such a model of being able to be culturally inclusive and responsive that my own six-year-old is there currently and thriving. So thank you, Board Member Hanson, for your leadership. We have a comment from Board Member Prichet.
Can we have Member Hanson please come up to the...
To this?
Yes, or to the stand before I start. It's not a roast, I promise. I just want to say that though I'm pleased with our outcome on our board, your position on this board is going to be greatly lost. And you definitely have had a passion in our district. And I know, like, for example, your brainchild was the Facilities Committee, and you knew so much about facilities. And you took me under your wing and really taught me all that you really knew about facilities. And I want you to know how much I appreciate... That's just one example of many of your kind acts on this board. And as today, you know, we still have a very strong Facilities Committee, and really, that was because of you. You asked for that committee. So thank you for that. You're definitely going to be greatly lost. I appreciate your friendship on this board, and I know it will continue, and just please keep in touch.
Thank you, Board Member Prichet. Do we have any other comments from Board Members at this time? We have a comment from First Vice President Wu.
Jay, I was here when we first selected you for the board, and it was one of my proudest votes. And I will say that your friendship means a lot, not only to me, but your leadership means a lot, and the entire board benefited from it. I wish you the best for every endeavor moving forward, and I am sure that you will still... we will still be in contact. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, First Vice President Wu. Outgoing Board Member Hanson.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve alongside all of you, and congratulations to the new Board Members. Public service really is a privilege, and when there's an opportunity to make a difference, it's really rewarding. And when I joined the board, there were definitely opportunities to make a difference here. I'm happy that working with all of you, we worked in breaking the logjam at the facilities to... on our vacant properties, and we're able to use those properties to help facilitate bringing the central kitchen and a new transportation facility. I'm happy that we work together and do standing committees and got email addresses from the school district for all of us, and I'm really proud about reopening Washington Elementary School and showing that when we make an investment in rehabilitating a property in our facilities and re-inspiring the academics, the community responds, the students respond, and it can really be amazing. Lea Tata was a special project as well, and I'm glad the Floyd Farms project is moving around, moving along, and I'll certainly still be involved in that. So whatever I can do to be helpful, you can count on that. And really, and all the amazing work that we did at McClatchy that brought that school into the 21st century and really provided a roadmap for rehabilitating other schools in our district, I think that's really important, too. But there's no doubt that the single most important item for me is leaving behind and being part of the amazing team that's in front of me right now. Your great School Board Members, I think that, you know, the staff is remarkable, a lot of the people that are here, that I've worked with over the years, Iris, Lisa, Consey, Kathy, and then getting to know Vincent and many more, adding our great legal counsel, our new treasurer, and Mr. Barrios and Elliott, Sheila, and of course Nathaniel, who's like usual, you know, and I'm sure he's working hard someplace, but it's always in the behind the scenes. There's great folks there. And to bring the superintendent and be part of that that we have at this district now, you know, we all know how very fortunate we are. Not only the best superintendent this district's had in decades, but I always tell people, and I'll continue to say it until I'm proven otherwise, you're going to be one of the best superintendents the state of California has or has had. But it doesn't happen without the cohesiveness of the board, and that is evident to me the last several years that I worked. It was not like that when I got on this board. It was someplace far, far away from where it's at now. The fiscal issues coming and go, it happens with regularity. Obviously, there's some, you know, difficult decisions ahead of you, but by sticking together and being together, you know, that's how you do it. And I'm particularly happy that Lisa is my new Board Member representing me and my district, so thank you. Do a good job. But your even keeled temperament, and I think the knowledge that you bring, you're the right person at the right time for this district. So I've enjoyed at least a good 80% of all the time that I served on this board, and I know that all the... that focusing on all the good things and, you know, minimize the bad, that's important. So I guess that's my last piece of advice, but, you know, our community and our students are relying on you to do your best, and I know that you will. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Hanson. Board Member Hanson, if you would please remain at the podium, First Vice President Wu is going to come down to present your apple. And I know that we have a few resolutions, I believe, from Assembly Member McCarty and from Senator Pan, if you wanted to come up to the podium to present those resolutions and say a few words.
Thank you, President Ryan. I'm here on behalf of Senator Pan as well as Assembly Member Cooley and Cooper, and certainly I came here tonight as a fan and a photographer, but I'm excited to do this as well. So Jay Hanson is certainly leaving us as our School Board Member, but he's not forgotten. This is a special moment for me, a personal note. I've known Jay for 25 years. I met him when I was a young college student, getting involved in public service, and he inspired many people to step up and get engaged, and I count Jay as one of my early friends and colleagues in the state of California arena of politics and public policy. And I knew that when Jay moved to Sacramento 20 years ago, that he wasn't just here to work at the state capitol, but he wanted to serve his community. So he got involved in his neighborhood. He served on our city Sacramento Parks Commission. And six years ago this winter, he decided to throw his name in the hat and apply to serve with a vacancy with the School Board. And as you know, this is a thankless job. I'm looking at all of you up here. But Jay decided that he cared so much about public service in our community and came in at a tough time, when we were coming out of the recession and making really difficult cuts to our public school system in California and in Sacramento. Later, had to serve over the difficult decision of the school closures and focused on what was best for taxpayers of the school district and the kids of Sacramento, and made some important but difficult decisions, but I think made it with his head up, looking forward. And so, Jay, we want to thank you on behalf of the state of California, on Senator Pan, myself, and our Assembly Members for serving the kids of Sacramento and serving Area 1 for the past six years, and wish you well. Thank you, Jay.
Moving on to item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
None, Madam President.
Item 6.0, agenda adoption. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Item 7.0, our special presentation. We are extremely excited to get to welcome two new Board Members tonight, and the returning Board Member, who is now our senior Board Member on the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education, our wise counsel indeed. As such, First Vice President Wu has asked, given some time constraints from the Honorable Troy Nunley, that we swear him in first. So we're going to be taking this out of order. If I can please ask Troy Nunley to approach the podium. Honorable Troy Nunley, the judge of the U.S. District Court, Eastern District of California, who will be swearing in for his third term on the School Board, Board Member Darrell Wu.
May I introduce my wife Nancy, my daughter Allison. I think you remember seeing her when the commencement, UC Merced, with the first lady.
Oh, yeah. Michelle Obama. It was 105 degrees, Darrell.
106.
106. You can't forget that.
108, she went out.
Okay, there you go. Are you ready for this?
I am.
All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Darrell Wu.
I, Darrell Wu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
In allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, First Vice President Wu. Our next member swearing in will be Board Member Lisa Morowski, who will be sworn in this evening by Amelia Rose Engel.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lisa Morowski.
I, Lisa Morowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
We photobomb again. No photobombing.
We photobomb yours. They get one thing for a photo.
That's right.
That's it. They get just one.
Our final swearing in of the evening before we'll have an opportunity to hear a few words from our newly elected Board Members as well as our returning Board Member is Letitia Garcia, who will be sworn in this evening by Rena Garcia, Victoria McCarty, and Barbara McCarty.
El cargo de miembro de la mesa directiva del distrito escolar de la ciudad de Sacramento. Yo declaro tu nombre.
I, Letitia Garcia.
Okay. Afirmo que apoyaré y defenderé.
Affirm that I will support and defend.
La Constitución de los Estados Unidos y la Constitución del estado de California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
Contra todos los enemigos extranjeros y nacionales.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Que seré verdaderamente fiel y leal.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
A la Constitución de los Estados Unidos y de California, del estado, de la Constitución del estado de California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
Que todo esto, toda esta obligación libremente.
That I take this obligation freely.
Sin ningún, sin ninguna reserva mental.
Without mental reservation.
O propósito de evasión.
For purpose of evasion.
Y que cumpliré bien y fielmente.
And that I will...
And faithfully. Los deberes del cargo que estoy por aceptar.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Member Garcia. At this time, we'll have an opportunity to hear from each of our newly elected members and our returning Board Member. We'll begin with First Vice President Wu.
Thank you, President Ryan. I just wanted to say a few words. Forty years of my professional career, without a doubt, service as a member of the School Board is among the most difficult I've ever encountered, but also the most rewarding. So I wanted to take this opportunity to thank my friends and my supporters. I want to thank our labor partners. I want to thank everyone who knocked on doors, who made phone calls, and helped me raise the money necessary to run a credible campaign, and of course, to Judge Nunley for swearing me in. As we move forward, together, we move forward for the children. We move forward so that all our students are given an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. I want to thank my family, my adopted son Danny, my real daughter Allison, and most importantly, my wife, because Nancy, my wife, she provides me the strength to do this important work for our children. And so, without her, I couldn't do this, and I think that she deserves a round of applause as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, First Vice President Wu. Board Member Morowski.
Hello, all. Just press on.
I'll get used to this. Okay. Hello, everyone. It's my deep honor to address you as your new Board Member. Thank you to Amelia Rose Engel, or Emmy as she goes by, who administered my oath tonight. Emmy is a student at the Law and Public Policy Academy at McClatchy. And are there any other McClatchy students here tonight? Raise your hand. Oh! Thank you all for coming out and being part of this. It is wonderful to see our young people so civically engaged, and just thank you for being here to support us, because we are here to support you, and that is why I am here. I promise to always put you first in decisions that we make on this board and look to maximize opportunities for your life success, and I am thrilled to be able to sit in this seat and do that for you. I want to thank my husband, Ben, who is my rock, my partner in everything. Thanks for reordering our lives to make it possible for me to serve here. And to my sons, Milo and Harvey. It's getting late. Thank you for your love and your patience with me, especially on those nights that I will be here trying to work to improve outcomes and life success for all of our kids. And thank you for understanding that and for supporting me in this role. You are the two very best sons a mom could ask for. Thank you to my village who believed in me, including some of my fellow Board Members here. Thank you to my family, who really taught me through their actions, not words, that what service means, what service to others really means. Thank you to my... the best in-laws someone could ever ask for, and to my dad, who couldn't be here but is watching, for having more faith in me than I probably deserved, but thank you, and I love you. And I also want to acknowledge the elected women and mothers who came before me. I stand on their shoulders tonight, and they have inspired me and blazed a trail that really allows me to be here and as a full participant in our public life. Thank you. And just finally, I'd say, you know, our district has some challenges, as you all are aware, and we'll discuss some of those challenges tonight, but I think we also stand at the brink of tremendous opportunity with a board and a superintendent and administrative staff that is really committed to collaborating with our teachers, staff, administrators, and all our employees, our parents, and community. with our teachers, staff, administrators, and all our employees, our parents, and community to improve outcomes for our students. We have a moral obligation to do that. We are committed to doing that. And we have, you know, also a fiduciary responsibility to our community that we will work on. And I am just thrilled and honored to be a part of this work to move Sac City Unified forward and do the very best we can to serve our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski. Board Member Garcia.
Thank you. I am deeply honored and humbled to represent trustee Area 2. So I want to thank the voters for supporting me in this endeavor. I was inspired to serve my community in a greater capacity, and I want to thank them for giving me the chance to do that. I want to thank my family and my friends who supported me from day one, especially my husband and my daughters, who did everything they could to make sure that I would succeed. So, thank you. I love you very, very much. Education changed my life. My mother, who swore me in today, was a farm worker. She picked strawberries, and I helped her sometimes. So I know how promising these opportunities can be for all children, even the poorest of the poor. That's why I'm here, because I want those opportunities to be there for our kids. And we're going to need to work hard, because we have tremendous challenges. But I also recognize that we have tremendous opportunities, and I will work hard to make sure that I come to the table with ideas, solutions, and the willingness to work hard to make sure that those opportunities are a reality for many kids. My father could not be here today, because he passed away eight days before the election. He would have been tremendously proud of me. He was extremely supportive and always asked me how things were going. And I know that he's looking from down above with a huge smile on his face, because he truly believed in community service and our sense of responsibility to give back to our community. So, my dad got me interested in politics and my sense of responsibility to my community. I want to thank my daughters for inspiring me to be a better person, a better mother, a better advocate for children. They are truly my inspiration, but my motivation are the thousands of kids that don't have the opportunities that they have. So, I'm excited, humbled, emotional, as you can tell, and I'm ready to get to work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Before we have an opportunity to adjourn so that our board members can celebrate with their family members, many who have traveled from far to be here tonight, I want to once again thank everyone in the audience, the village of support that has turned out to see our board members take their oath of office. That includes former Mayor Phil Eisenberg, who I didn't have an opportunity to recognize earlier, as well as Elk Grove Vice Mayor Darren Suen. So, thank you. And finally, as we move to momentarily pause for a recess and celebration, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Harold Jones. Many of you might have passed Harold on your way in tonight. He is a tireless employee of Sac City Unified School District. In fact, he has devoted forty years of service to the district as our security guard. He tried to retire eighteen years ago and quickly learned that retirement was not for him, that he had more to give and the desire to serve. And so, he came back to the district and put in eighteen additional years. So tonight, Harold Jones is celebrating forty years with the district, and I hope that you'll take the opportunity to thank him for his commitment to our students. And with that, we will take a brief thirty-minute recess. Good evening. I know everyone is very excited about the new board members swearing in. In the interest of making it through the remainder of the agenda, we're calling back to order the rest of our open session. We will be moving on to Item 7.3, approving the annual organizational meeting of the Board of Education. I also want to remind before our Item 8.0 goes up, public comment, for those of you who wish to submit a public comment tonight, it will be limited to two minutes, but we will take those public comments if you deliver them to Mr. Barrios over here prior to public comment. Item 7.3, the approval of our annual organizational meeting of the Board of Education. We are going to ask for nominations tonight. Nominations will come separately. We will first take a nomination for president, then followed by a call for nomination for vice president, first vice president, and second vice president. Do we have a motion? I have a motion, or sorry, I have a request to speak from First Vice President Wu.
Thank you, President Ryan. It is not the usual methodology of this board, but I'm going to suggest, because of the era that we are in, I think that this board needs continuation, stability, leadership that you have placed, have you served for us. And I'm going to take the unusual notion to recommend you to serve another term as president.
Thank you, First Vice President Wu. Is that a motion?
Yes.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The motion carries. Thank you so much for your vote of confidence. I'm incredibly humbled. This is extremely difficult work, and even in the face of the challenges we have before us, I continue to keep faith that in partnership with our community, our labor partners, and with students as our North Star, we will find a solution. I'd like to ask for a motion for our First Vice President. We have a request from Board Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Ryan, and congratulations. And with that notion of how proud we are of our executive committee, I'd also like to move to elect First Vice President as a member Wu.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The motion carries. Do we have a motion for our second vice president? Also, Board Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Ryan. I'd also like to move to elect second vice president as a member Minnick.
Do we have a second?
Aye. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The motion carries. By unanimous vote, we have a new executive committee, a remaining executive committee. At this time, we are going to also do our board committee assignments. When we come back in January, we will have the opportunity to, per board bylaw, discuss the roles and responsibility of these board committees. These are working committees, and I want to thank our board members prior to their assignments for their service, given the magnitude of the work before them. First, we have our policy committee, which will be chaired by Board Member Mai Vang, who's done an outstanding job in that role. Our members on that committee alongside Board Member Vang will be Board Member Wu and myself. We have our facilities committee, which will be chaired by Board Member Christina Pritchett, who has, as you know, also done an outstanding job in that role previously. Also serving on that committee will be our new board member, Letitia Garcia, and Board Member Mai Vang. We have a new committee, and I think a reimagined committee, that will be greatly strengthened, Fiscal Transparency and Accountability Committee. That board chair will be Board Member Lisa Murawski. Daryl Wu will also serve on that board, as well as myself. We have a governance committee, which will be chaired by Michael Minnick, Board Member Michael Minnick. Also on that committee will be Board Members Lisa Murawski and Board Member Garcia. And finally, we have a superintendent evaluation committee, which will be chaired by our First Vice President Daryl Wu. Also serving on that committee will be Board Member Christina Pritchett and Board Member Michael Minnick. And with that, we have our committee assignments complete. We do have one comment from Board Member Minnick.
Thank you, President Ryan. Regarding the governance committee in which you just appointed me chair, I would like to ask if Member Halbo would be able to join that committee so that we can, as part of our work in good governance, look at how we can incorporate student voice in more levels of our decision-making? And if you would like to join us, we would love to have you.
I would wholeheartedly support that request by Vice President Minnick. I want to thank you for your leadership in continuing to elevate student voice. Board Member Halbo is often the smartest person in the room, and we are so grateful for the contribution to your offer. And I know that we have been very intentional as a board to include active student participation, including our former student board member being an active member of the selection process of our superintendent. So, thank you so much, Board Member Halbo, for your service and for your willingness to be a part of the governance committee.
Did she agree?
She did.
Okay, good.
Item 8.0, public comment.
Right. We have twenty-six public comments. If you could line up in the order that you hear your name called, please. Alex Visaya, followed by Cecile Nunley, followed by David Fisher, followed by Amy Thibodeau, Nafisa Young, Chris Watkins, Monica Harvey, Catherine Bullos, Zachary Bryant, Alice Mercer, Damian Harmony, Tim Douglas, Ricardo Martinez, Scott Chase, Lori Jablonsky, Laura Shirley, Cindy Stewart, Nikki Milewski, Brian Parker, Tara Williams, Bob Priestley, Ruth Cave Sosa, Terry Ann Katauski, Joaquin Calderon, Richard Owens, Ian Arnold, Nathan Hansford, and Alan Dury.
So, given the magnitude of the comments, we do have the opportunity to reduce the public comments to one minute per commenter. I want to allow for the full two minutes, but I will not allow going over the two minutes in respect for everyone's time and wanting to honor your ability to speak this evening. Mr. Visaya, we are so happy to see you, and we have not been to your time.
So, I'll have twenty minutes for the rest of the evening. Thank you. Good evening, my distinguished board, cabinet, and staff, distinguished guests in the audience, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar. Good evening. My name is Alex Visaya, community for students and families in the district. Let me congratulate my congratulations to the new board member. Welcome. Someday, you will get to know me. Thank you. Let me direct my question to Mr. Wu. Now that it is official, shall we expect another four years from you after this term? I asked the boss, and she only gave me a grin. So, later on, you tell me what's in your mind, sometime.
After I ask the boss.
Here's why I ask. I'm gonna give you a name drop of people that you know. Sounds familiar? Tom Chin, twelve years. Robert King Fong, five point four years. Pat Fong Cusida, five months. And last but not least, Yoon Lee, five years. So, you need to go over the twelve years. Finally, let me wish everyone Merry Christmas in this way. Nam baga pasquayo, maligayang pasco, melik kalikamaka. And finally...
Thank you, Board Member Visaya. I mean, Board Member Visaya, Community Member Visaya. You've been a part of our community for so long. Thank you. Cecile?
Good evening, board, and congratulations to the new members. Welcome back, Trustee Wu. Congratulations, Murawski and Trustee Garcia. It's great to see everyone here. I do hope that the board remains cohesive and in their support of Superintendent Aguilar. I think that's so important with so much critical items going forward. It's also really critical that that Labor Management Consortium is in place and that it's been so strong and so helpful. The one thing that I did want to talk to the board about tonight, I did attend or participate in the African-American Task Force last night, and there was a disturbing report that came out that I felt the board should be aware of. You may already be aware, but apparently, there has been some issues with parents as far as parents having the police called on them for no reason, and there was a complaint filed. It almost appeared, from the story that was shared with us, that it appeared to even violate civil rights. And that really is something that I think the board should take very seriously. It was very, very concerning with how staff at a particular school site was treating the parents there. And with the filing of the complaint, the board, as you well know, is on notice that they need to do something, because if they do not, then the board itself and the district itself can be sued. So, I was very, very concerned. I believe Superintendent Aguilar knows about the incident, and I'm hopeful that it will be resolved appropriately.
Thank you, Ms. Nunley. We'll follow up.
Okay.
Mr. Fisher?
Turn this on. Just press the button. Is it on?
It's on.
It's on. Okay, thanks. Hi. David Fisher, President of Sac City Teachers Association, two children in the district. First of all, congratulations and welcome, Trustee Murawski and Garcia. We look forward to working with you. So, that being said, you know, things get kind of rough and tumble sometimes, and, you know, stuff happens, right? What I witnessed and went through last Thursday was, I think, thought even using hyperbole, was probably the most underhanded and deceitful thing I've ever experienced. As you know, we signed the agreement with Checker and had a press conference about it in front of the mayor's office. That's what that was about. KCRA asked me about it. I say, we signed an agreement with Checker, or about Checker, to reduce if we find savings in our health benefits, they will go to the students in the form of resources and class sizes. This is not new to anyone. Every one of you knows exactly what that was about. Then, I get up in the morning. Starts like this. Eleven oh eight PM, Mr. Alex Barrios, who I've never talked to about anything having to do with negotiations or signing anything, sends me this text. "Thanks, David, for agreeing publicly on KCRA moments ago to sign off on Checker. Should we do a signing ceremony tomorrow with all the labor partners? I'll get all the news stations there. How about noon tomorrow at Cerna?" That's weird. Can't help himself, just keeps texting me late at night. Eleven thirty. Please let me know by nine AM tomorrow morning if I should move forward with the press conference. Am I supposed to know about some press conference? Am I supposed to know about some press conference? 7:55 AM, I've got like eight people behind me.
You'll be combining the time with other speakers?
Yes, I will. Like, eight people behind me. All right. "Hi, David. KCRA is asking you for doing this signing ceremony. Please let me know within the next hour. I need time to organize it." See what's happening here? Well, before I do that, then a couple Board Members jump into the fray. Board Member Hanson, "Good morning, Dave. Congrats on signing the Checker Agreement today. Great steps to show the community you're a positive player. No one said anything. We signed the Checker Agreement last year." Board Member Wu, "Saw you on the news, and since you said that you agreed on working for healthcare news, I urge you to join the district for the Checker Signing Ceremony this morning." Remember, I just told this at 8:00 in the morning. Finally, I respond. Kind of weird this happening. I'm surprised this is news to you. This is to Alex. "We signed and ratified the agreement last year in December. Recently sent our letter to the Superintendent reiterating our desire to implement the contract. I'm sure Conti could help you find a copy of the contract. If not, let me know, and I'll send it, because Conti is CC'd on all of these." So, I sent him a link to our contract, which we signed last year. Why, all of a sudden, you're calling me to do a ceremony about it? Who knows? "Please send it to me, so I can be sure we're referring to the same document. Press wants to be 100% sure the announcement is official and the actual paperwork signed. What time are we doing this signing ceremony? What the heck is going on? What signing ceremony? That we've never talked about." He doesn't leave me alone. By the way, we've had private conversations about Mr. Barrios harassing teachers at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, and we've kept it private. So, this is getting out of hand here. Okay, what time we do it? Oh, this is Conti. "I'll reach out to Checker." Well, that's weird. We're in contact with Checker. What's going on? We call Checker. Nothing. They know nothing about it. It's a huge publicity stunt. Then, 1:44 in the afternoon. "Hi, David. Here's a draft of the document labor partners can sign to authorize Checker to move forward with this work. I'll see you at 6:00 PM in front of the boardroom for the signing ceremony. If 6:00 PM doesn't work, let me know." Never saw this document in my life. 1:44 it comes, and I'm being told to come and be ambushed to sign it. Sign what? No one, no good actor works that way. Nobody sends something to somebody, sets them up, and has the press come down and try to embarrass them personally and all the teachers that we represent to sign something that we have no idea what you're even talking about. Won't leave me alone. Now famous that I took my kid to the soccer game, thanks to the... "Hi, David. Let me know where you are. Thanks." At this point, I'm driving. On my way here, because I am gonna come and speak at our normal time. You can see three question marks. "I'm at my soccer game." In other words, leave me alone. "I emailed you already. We signed agreement." Well, you guys know what happened to that. He doesn't keep that private. He shows that to the news media. And then you guys, over and over, keep sharing it over and over about my son at a soccer game. You know, we have had personal conversations about our kids. We would never bring up anything without what you're doing with your kids. It's not any of your business, let alone show it to the media. Okay. Look at, the harassment continues. "We will get this document for your first signature. Is there any indication that I'm gonna sign something? Do I even know about it? The news media is asking why you didn't show up, and we are letting them know. We believe you will sign." Don't speak for us. You know the agreement was signed last year. When's he gonna leave me alone? "Why weren't you here for the press opportunity? We have been talking about this." What? We have? No, you've been harassing me with unwanted texts all night and all day. You shouldn't have had a conflict. We had our press conference a year ago. Of course, you know that. This is not how people treat each other. File the unfair labor practice, because that is not only immoral...
So, David, we now are... So, I just want to give you...
It is. I'm almost done.
We have seven people's time used right now. I just wanted to make sure.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you. Because it's unlawful to bargain in that way and try to, you know, leverage people in that way. Okay. That being said, exposed that kind of stunt, some more people are gonna speak their mind. We thought that suing teachers and not abiding by contract was bad enough. I want to say that we're gonna end tonight on a positive note. We have a solution. And we've presented part of it before, and Nikki, at the end, is gonna present a comprehensive solution to the budget crisis that prioritizes our children and also respects our contract that we've already signed. Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Barrios, we are taking out eight public commenters for the one. I just want to make sure that that adjustment has been made?
Yes.
Hello, Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Alice Mercer, and I am a teacher at Bancroft Elementary. Why I am here? I'm an 18-plus-year teacher. I currently teach over at Bancroft Elementary in College Greens. I'm here about the current budget fiasco and the illegal, unfair, inconceivable abrogation of our contract. There has been a complete lack of respect for teachers and for our contract. I'm not gonna get into the details, because I know other folks are here to go over and share some of that, people who were on the bargaining team. The district has refused to negotiate and has gone over and tried to corner us over into changes in our healthcare. That, given the history of what's gone on before four years ago with the Keenan imposition of a new healthcare program that was in direct violation of our contract, this is something that not only worries me, but the teachers at my school site and the teachers at other sites. We don't have a level of trust. In addition to that, unprofessional behavior by a former Board Member, Jay Hanson, on social media in the past week, has really riled up teachers. He made inaccurate and false statements about the negotiations. He took a belittling tone with teachers who asked respectful questions. When one of them questioned about the salary level politely of the Superintendent, his answer to that when saying that she, when she complained about what was going on with our contract, said, "Well, maybe you should just become a Superintendent and other teachers." I am sorry, this situation with how our students are doing in schools, we cannot administrate our way out of it. And you have shown, over the past year, that your priority is the administrators and not the teachers. They notice, they're paying attention, they are concerned, they won't stand for it.
I'm back. With your stunt last week that I got to witness, you've gotten other unions to stake sole claim to being for the kids. I'm for the kids. I teach them daily with minimal supplies. I teach them well after my contracted time. I keep them safe during lockdowns, and I guide them to safety during evacuations. You know this, Superintendent Aguilar, because you came later that day. We've invited you to binding and expedited arbitration, so that you can uphold your end of the bargain, so that we can get back to training to be better teachers for the kids. We keep inviting you to the savings that we've already found, so that the bad budgets that you've submitted don't hurt my kids. We keep offering to sit on the Budget Committee, since your CBO isn't an accountant and your bad budgets stop hurting my kids. We pointed out that the contract you signed, because it specifically benefits our kids, I invite you to start telling the truth about where all the money is going, so that the parents know why the money isn't going to their kids. So, once again, I invite you. Tell the truth. Come sit down and keep your word. I yield my time to the next speaker.
And if we can restart the clock, please? Thank you.
Good evening. Congratulations, ladies, on your election. My name is Tim Douglas. I've been a teacher at McClatchy High School for over 23 years now. I have been a lifelong resident of Sacramento. I went to Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, Albert Einstein Middle School, Sacramento High School, Sacramento City College, and Sacramento State University. I love my job at McClatchy, and that is why I am here today to tell you two things. First, I pray to God that the state takes over this district and rebuilds it, from the café on the ground floor to the office suites at the top. For the past 20 years, I have seen horrible mismanagement of this district. I have seen this Board lurch from crisis to crisis, mismanagement, instability, and what I think is malfeasance. There are good people at CERN, but they are failed by a part-time school board, who has always been composed of people who see this position as a stepping stone to higher office or a bigger paycheck. You folks don't last. We teachers last. You continue climbing, leaving no permanent good from your tenure. Trust me, I know. I've seen it. Secondly, last year, Jay Hanson lied to you. Jay Hanson lied to the public. Jay Hanson lied to the children. Jay Hanson lied to my colleagues. Jay Hanson lied to my friends and family. Jay Hanson stated up here that I was a racist and repeated lies to back up that assertion. None of you said anything when that happened. CERN's own outsourced investigation has exonerated me. Those who know me were not fooled. I had hoped that Jay was gonna still be here, but Jay, if you're watching on TV, keep my name out of your mouth. Until you folks take responsibility for the crisis you have created, nothing will be ever done for the children of Sacramento who reside in our district. I yield the rest of my time.
And you've used your full two minutes.
My name's Scott Chase. I'm a teacher at Mark Twain Elementary School. This is my 30th year in the district. Prior to that, I was a student from 1970 to 1983, so I have altogether 43 years of service and as a student to this district. Before I begin, I want to start with a statement. Budgets are a reflection of priorities. In 2014, this district had a budget of $405 million. In 2018, you have a budget of $505 million. In 2013, the student enrollment was 38,700. Now, the enrollment's about 40,000. What's different? In 2013 and 2014, you had 166 total administrators. Now, today, you have 269.8 administrators. The difference is 103.8. Each administrator makes on an average salary of $160,000. If you multiply 160 times 103.8, you'll get $16.6 million. In addition to that, this district has a priority problem. One of the priority problems is that during a, what I'm using your words, during a fiscal crisis, this district had optional $6 million of vacation payouts to top administrators. Some administrators, and let me explain what I mean by this. This is not their salary. This did not have to be paid out. This was optional payouts. Some administrators made as much as $152,000. In addition to this, I served on all 34 bargaining meetings. I didn't miss one. And just to give you an idea how long bargaining lasted, one of the members was pregnant, and when we finally signed our agreement, her baby was walking. Her baby's in the audience today, and she's now gonna be two years old in January. The point I'm gonna make, though, is this district has budgeted $2.9 million for outside legal counsel and has spent all of that money...
I'm yielding my time.
Has spent all of that money, all that $2.9 million, except $736,000. It's time that we live up to the motto of this district, to put students first. The teachers really aren't the problem. I work with dedicated individuals that are not in it for the money. We're not in it because we're gonna get rich. To give you an idea, my daughter's 29 years old. She already makes more than I do. So, as a 30-year veteran teacher with a master's degree, my daughter's making more money than I am. I'm proud of my daughter. That's not the point. The point I'm trying to make is that teachers are not in this for the money. This district needs to get its priorities straight. You spend way too much on administration. It is bureaucratic bloat at its best. You can save $16.6 million by just reducing the amount of administrators you have. It's time to really just work together with your labor partners. And speaking of labor partners, as you know, we have five labor groups. And I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot of superintendents come and go. I've seen lots of things. I've never seen a time where the four other labor groups are pitted against one labor group. I'm a dedicated teacher. I wake up every day. I love my job. I feel blessed to do it. I wouldn't change anything, but it's time that we spend money wisely. Local control funding was a boom for a district like this. Local control funding basically raised, student ADA was raised about 4,900 across the state. Just to give you an idea how unusual it is to have a budget that doesn't pass certification, last year, there was 1,100 school districts. Only four had a negative certification. And this is at a time of financial abundance. So, the time that my benefits are being attacked and my colleagues' benefits are being attacked, it's at a time of all-time high. And I've read your emails, and I do appreciate your emails, but it's time to put our budgets...
If you can please wrap up. Thank you.
This is my 13th year at Rosa Parks. I'm also the treasurer of SCTA. I'm here to remind you that we made an agreement on Article 13.1 in December of 2017. It stated that we would bring in Checker to find healthcare savings for our mutual benefit and goals of lowering class sizes, increasing special ed teachers, psychologists, nurses, and to benefit our students. We need to stand by this agreement. This is something that would help all of our students in having more people on campus to help them when these troubling times. Many of our students are in crisis, and we see it every day in our classrooms. They often act out because they don't have any other options. They try to get help, but they don't know who to go to. We spend a lot of our time working with children who are in crisis and need help. And yet, here we are, all the time, and no one else is there. No one else helps. We find people who can do some things. We have, we need more support. The students need more support. They need lower class sizes. They haven't had the ability to find themselves and help themselves. We have to constantly spend time trying to help them solve problems in their lives, problems that we haven't created, but problems that we have to help steer them through. It is not fair to these children who are in large class sizes, who do not have the support oftentimes of family members, because their family members are in crisis, and we are dealing with it. And what do we get out of it? We get beat up, beat up by Board Members. We get beat up because we don't know what we're talking about. We're the ones who are living with them. You need to get over it.
Hello, I'm Cindy Stewart. I'm a teacher at Susan B. Anthony and Theodore Judah, and I have a question that I would like you guys to answer to the public and to parents and to teachers. Why haven't you agreed to arbitration? To get back to the promise you signed, all of you signed, the promise you made to parents to lower class sizes and add more support staff, the promise that would benefit all our students? Why? The teachers have given, have not given up on our students. We fight for them daily, but you have. I yield the rest of my time.
Good evening, members of the Board and new members of the Board. Welcome. Nikki Malewski of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. In 1718, the Sacramento City Unified School District adopted its original first interim budget. It also adopted its second interim budget in March of 2018. Both had the concurrence of the SAC County Office of Education. The second interim budget was approved after all of the union contracts have been negotiated and signed, including the Sacramento City Teachers Association. and signed, including the Sacramento City Teachers Association. In June, the district submitted its original 1819 budget, but in August, SCOWI rejected that budget. And on October, SCOWI rejected a second budget, the revised budget. And on December 6, Sac City Unified submitted a third revised budget with a negative certification. What is sad is that this crisis here in Sac City is more about imprudent fiscal oversight and misplaced priorities than about a lack of revenue. According to audited financial statements, general fund revenue was $405 million in 2014. In 2018, revenue grew to more than $505 million. Despite this funding increase, and unlike surrounding districts, Sac City's finances took a dramatic downturn in March, from March of 18 to August of 18. For example, last year only four out of nearly 1,100 school districts in the entire state of California submitted budgets with a negative certification. We are aware of no district other than Sac City has had their budget outright rejected by the county. As educators, parents, and community leaders, we believe it is our responsibility to put forth potential solutions to the budget fiasco. According to your presentations, you say that $16 million will fix the budget. And using that $16 million as a target number, therefore this proposal is intended, the one that is before you, not just to address the current budget fiasco...
Okay, can you please reset for two more minutes?
But more importantly, to restructure Sac City's spending priorities to guarantee that our district truly puts students first. We also believe, however, that the long-term solution for Sac City cannot be found by simple austerity measures. That is, cutting our way to a solution. Spending choices must reflect renewed commitment to our classrooms and to making Sac City the destination district for California. Here's our proposal on how we might accomplish that. As you can see, we can save $16 million by reducing central office administrators to the 2014 levels. We can reduce admin pay to more reasonable level. That will change, it will save us $600,000. Eliminate the vacation buyout for admins and others. That's another $6 million. Reduce the use of outside attorneys for labor relations. That's another $1.2 million. Redirect retiree healthcare insurance overpayment. That's a $12.5 million savings. Change to less costly healthcare plans according to Article 13.1 that you heard Laura Shirley talk to you about and that you signed in December will save us $16 million. Redirect Equity Department and Admin to site-based restorative practices. That's a $1.5 million savings. Terminate the contract with Core. That's $200,000. Terminate third-party contracts for language, speech, and hearing, nursing, and other, and restore other positions. That's another $4.2 million for a total of $60 million in savings. These savings generate substantially more than the $16 million amount identified to achieve fiscal solvency. But most important is students being our first priority. And with this savings, we propose the following priorities can be addressed. Balance the budget for $16 million. Reinstate extended summer learning program that was never actually budgeted in the first place, $2.5 million. Fund elementary flag football, basketball, and strides running program for $1.5 million. Reduce class size. Increase staffing and professional support staff consistent with Article 13, $16 million. Implement restorative practices, including professional development for all teachers and staff, $3 million. Introduce art and music classes in all elementary schools, $1.4 million. And the retention of current staffing levels of classified staff. That's budget neutral. That would only cost us $40.4 million. This leaves an additional $19.6 million in reserves. By refocusing the district's priorities away from the CERN center and into our classroom, it both directly benefits our, enhancing our students' learning environment and is likely to have a more positive effect on the district's financial position. Special education, for example, by using the savings from healthcare to lower class sizes and increase additional professional staff, the district in cooperation with the association can implement a robust intervention program that will ensure that those students who are struggling receive the intervention services that they need while at the same time reducing the number of students who may be over identified for special education. Sac City has a higher proportion of students in special education than both the state and federal averages, which harms our students and adds greater cost to the district.
Thank you. Do we have another person yielding their time?
By implementing a robust intervention program, students get the services they need while the district's resources are used where they are appropriate and needed. Restorative practices is another example for, by investing in restorative practices, a comprehensive program of behavioral intervention with much-needed culturally sensitive, trauma-informed professional development for all teachers and staff, which encourages cooperation and social-emotional learning over punitive disciplinary measures, which have disproportionately impacted African-American students. By keeping students in the classroom, we improve their outcomes and we also improve the district's finances. Looking ahead to 2020, in addition, the parties reiterate their commitment to work with Mayor Steinberg to sponsor a 2020 ballot initiative that will enable the district to provide arts and music, restorative practices, and other enhancements designed to enrich students' academic and cultural experiences, including summer school, and encourage students to give all the students the opportunities to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. We are in touch with CONSEEM and we offer 4 o'clock tomorrow at SCTA to discuss. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Bob Priestley. I teach at San Brandon Middle School. And I want to welcome the new members to the board. I want to caution the new members, don't get too close to anybody. You owe everything to these kids in this district, not to any loyalty of any other board member. That's happened way too often to the detriment of everybody. And by the way, our superintendent, I want to talk to my brothers and sisters out there. Hold on. You earn over $300,000 a year, plus you also have a job with Merced College earning over I think it's time to give up one of the jobs. And I really mean that sincerely. Okay? You've tried it, it didn't work. And you've got to just accept the responsibility. You've got a job down there. Time to head back. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Arnold, I understand that you will be combining your time as a group. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that will be 10 minutes or 10 minutes? Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Should I wait for it to reset? There we go.
Go ahead. Yes, thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Good evening, President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, board members. Congratulations to the newly seated board members. Six years ago, I stood here and I said that we needed to bring FICMAT in. And I said that this district would be much better served by going into bankruptcy proceedings and being taken over by the state. This is not the same superintendent we had at that time. This is not the same board we have at that time, and I no longer feel that way. I think there are things that we can do to fix the current situation. I'm not happy that we're in it. I think we need to know exactly how we got here. We need to know exactly how we're going to make sure it never happens again. But to do that, we've got to make it through the next year. And in order to do that, we need, we need something that we can all agree to. We need something to fix that immediate hole. Some of us have been talking about this for about four years. The superintendent invited all the bargaining units back in the springtime to come together to form a labor management group of some sort. Most of us came along, we did some trainings, and we've been working since the summer on this budget issue. I think bringing in a new proposal at this time, it's great that somebody's doing other work, but we need to move forward with something that we know is a concrete proposal that fixes the immediate problem. Because otherwise, we're simply holding the kids hostage to our feelings. And that's just not right. We need to do what's right for the kids with this year's money and move forward. We all have things we'd like to have fixed. We're never going to stop arguing with you guys when we disagree with you, but we don't have time to argue about everything while the district is completely sinking. Alan?
Thank you. My name's Alan Dory and I represent the Teamsters Bargaining Units. I want to congratulate the two new board members and the returning board members. Thank you all for your commitment to the children in this district. The FICMAT report just came out and shows that the district has taken a lot of bad actions or done a lot of inactions, and they may very well be responsible for why we're here. Last time the district screwed up this bad or almost this bad, all the bargaining units had to dig the district out. We took the hit. And we're going to be the ones that are going to have to do it again. So every, every, every bargaining unit is the ones that will, every bargaining unit is going to be sitting there affected by the actions and inactions that this district took before us. And everyone has a right to be angry, including the Teamsters. That center thing, I stand with SEIU and UPE to say that we need to work together. If the teachers' proposals, any of it has any merit, great, let's look at it. But we also have another proposal that we looked at, at putting the checker formula together. And if the teachers want to get together with us, we've all invited them. The district has, the different bargaining units have, and there's $16 million or approximately $16 million of savings. Maybe there's other savings in their proposals that are real, maybe some of them aren't. I saw some that I thought probably wouldn't work, such as the vacation buyout. That's already been done. That money's already been spent. So I don't know how that could save us any money. But that center thing, I invite everyone to work together and really, we need to sit there and stay angry, but we also need to work together for a solution. And in the end, that's really what we need to do. We can't sit there and just be angry about the past.
Good evening. Richard Owen, representing UPE and also speaking on behalf of the LMC as well. I'd like to first of all, welcome the new board members. We're very glad you're here. We're looking forward to working with each and every one of you. I had a chance to look at the report by FICMAT. I'm very familiar with FICMAT and its work. And you know, I couldn't help but think that the district does have a lot to atone for. There are a lot of mistakes that have been made over many different administrations and this board, member board, members that are here. You've helped facilitate some of those mistakes. And I think it would be helpful at this time in our journey together that if the board would just once say, "We screwed up. We made a mistake." I haven't heard you say that, and that's really important for somebody to say it. Don't tell me that it's not my fault, that we didn't do it. You approved those budgets. And somebody needs to say, "We made a mistake, but we're going to correct it. And we're going to do good by the children and the employees in the district." I also want to clarify some of the mischaracterizations I just heard. We indeed have formed a labor coalition with the intention not only of helping solve this fiscal crisis, but also for changing the culture in the district and how decisions are made going forward. Because we don't ever again want to be in this situation. Let me say to all the teachers that are out there, we are not against you and we are not going to get involved in any kind of way in your dispute about salary issues. That's something that you're going to have to take up in Superior Court or arbitration or whatever way. But we do encourage teachers to join us. We'd like to have conversations with you about how we can move this forward. But we do need to hear the board to say, "We messed this up. We screwed this up, but now we're going to fix it." And I realize Superintendent Aguilar's only been here for one year. We've got new board members here. You may not have made all these decisions, but when you read that FICMAT report, it is a condemnation of the way the district has done business. Let's be honest about it and admit it so that we can move forward. It really hurts and makes people angry when this board sits here and acts as though they had nothing to do with it. You can't do that. So we're not going to stand against teachers. We're never going to interfere with that. We want to work together. We want to be part of a broad, broad, general solution. We do think that it's in all of our interests to join into a common healthcare pool. We get a better rate when we all join together to do that. I also would urge a very serious consideration of what the teachers have presented. Let's take a look at it. Let's find out what's factual, what's not factual, what has merit, what doesn't have merit. We too want to hear the answers to what they have presented. So don't let anybody ever fool you to think that we're just all about a labor coalition that's here just to support the board. We're here to support each member of every union that's in the district, and we don't intend to operate any different from that. And so we urge this board to stay united, to stay focused on what the problem is, and let us all try to all move together. But listen, there's a lot of distrust in this district. I was a part of it. I've seen it. There's good reason why people are angry at this district. There's good reason why people don't trust you. They don't trust the district because this stuff has gone on so long. So how are we going to move forward and build that trust is a question we have to answer. And I don't have the answer to it right here and right now, but I do know that it's going to start, at least on our part, with this coalition that we have to get in a room with you and have those courageous conversations, those adult conversations about how we move forward together. We urge our colleagues and our brothers and sisters in the teaching profession to join us in those conversations. There's no need for us to operate separately. We could join forces and move this district forward together and change how some of these things have happened in the past if we join forces to do it. Thank you very much.
And I think there is no more public comment at this time. I do want to encourage those who came out to speak tonight to stay for our FICMAT presentation. I think it will speak to many of the themes that were discussed earlier about how we came to arrive at the challenges that we have right now financially, some of the very honest recommendations about the corrections that need to be made forward so that we are in fact in a place of fiscal solvency. And so I hope that you'll join us for that. I do also just want to finally say before we move on to that item, it strikes me as one of our commenters said that, you know, there has been 20 years of mistrust, both with leadership and superintendents. Now, that's a long line of individuals. I cannot promise to correct 20 years of mistrust, but what I will tell you is there are several board members who are sitting at this dais, who have children in the schools. And so the decisions we make are going to impact our children for the next 10 years. And that is a dynamic that I don't think we should discount. At the same time, we're continuing to say, "Let's move forward in a spirit of building because our students deserve it." So with that, I'm moving on to Item 9.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. Item 9.1, we're going to receive information from the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team, FICMAT, and that Fiscal Health Risk Analysis Report, the findings will be presented by Mr. Mike Fein. And once again, I would encourage those who express their concerns to also hear from an independent audit.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent to the new members and returning members. Congratulations to you. Just a note of personal, very personal, congratulations to Mrs. Garcia. We have had the opportunity to work together for many years in our various roles that we've had, and so congratulations, especially to you. We've talked about these opportunities and leadership over many years. My name is Mike Fein. I am the Chief Executive Officer of the State's Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team, or more commonly known as FICMAT by our initials. I'm going to just give you a couple introductory remarks, and then I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Giacominie, who is our Deputy Executive Officer. But more importantly, Michelle led our team here in Sac City through this Fiscal Health Risk Analysis. And so she was, and her team were the ones here on the ground doing the work. Also with us this evening is another team member that was part of Michelle's team, and that's Tammy Ethier, who is one of our intervention specialists with extensive experience both in districts and county offices. So what is FICMAT? Just briefly, for those not familiar with us, we are an independent, external state agency. That may sound absolutely crazy. Sometimes we think it is absolutely crazy. But in the wisdom of that Delane Easton introduced AB 1200 back in 1991, that I'm going to talk more about, the legislature created our agency as part of the fiscal oversight process for school districts through that legislation. And they purposefully didn't place us in the various traditional control agencies of the Department of Ed or the Department of Finance or the Controller's Office, but they created a vehicle for us to be independent and therefore... they created a vehicle for us to be independent, and therefore, to be able to have the freedom to voice our opinion. We are viewed both in Sacramento and through the K-14, because we serve our community college partners as well. We are viewed as the truth-tellers, and I hope that our report is taken in that vein. We work hard to make sure that what we say and what we report on is factual. The good news is, in our work that we do each day, is that about 70% of our work is management assistance. It's the last half of our name. And those are districts that reach out to us and ask for assistance in some areas. It's not always financial. Sometimes it's governance, sometimes it's operational maintenance, food service, transportation, special education, a variety of things. The first half of our name, Fiscal Crisis, the good news is, that's only about 10% of our work, although right now, it's growing. And I'm going to talk about how we got here to SAC City, but I think it's important that you know that it was your superintendent, I assume with the backing of this board, that actually initially reached out to us. And so, in our first conversations, we're under the management assistance, calling us in and asking us for help. How we ultimately got here, unfortunately, is under the fiscal crisis category, because as time advanced, just over a short period of a couple of weeks in the summer, actually, we, our role, the initiation of our role slightly changed, and I'll talk about that. We also are the agent, unfortunately, for the state and county superintendents when there's allegations of fraud and misappropriation of funds and other illegal fiscal activities, where we do those investigations and then work with law enforcement to support, should the findings indicate, support the prosecution of various individuals. And then, we spend a lot of time on professional development. The bottom line, and you know this, we're all together in this education business. We absolutely believe in education. We spend a lot of time on professional development, because what we know as the best tool to prevent fiscal distress and fiscal crisis in school districts is solid, well-informed, not only governing boards, but business offices and leaders in our school district that know exactly what they're doing and understand the consequences of actions. And so, we spend a lot of time on that. So, let me briefly introduce kind of the process, and then I'm going to pause and turn it over to Michelle, who's going to walk through the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis that we did for you, and then I'm going to conclude by continuing to talk about kind of the process around AB 1200. So, I refer to Assembly Bill 1200 authored by Delane Easton in 1991, so about 27 years now. It is, while there's been 40-plus pieces of legislation that have come along since that point in time that tweak it here and there, amend it, add provisions, the most recent, just in the last session, through AB 1840, which I will talk about as well. It is what we commonly refer to, though, as the umbrella of oversight with regard to the state and the county superintendent's role in locally governed school districts. It empowers the county superintendent, first and foremost, to have that oversight responsibility. But before we ever get to oversight, what is super-important, and I think you recognize this, but you have to keep it in front of you constantly, ultimately, you, this body, as the elected board, along with your partner, the superintendent, as the governing team in this body, for this organization, it is your responsibility to ensure fiscal stability. It is your responsibility to ensure your budget's balanced and you're moving forward and serving the needs of your community within the resources that you have. The oversight process is supplementary to all that. It is to affirm the work you're doing or to intervene when needed, and that's where we're at today, is through that intervention process. AB 1200 is very similar to what we do in the classroom each day. Our teachers do in the classroom each day with regard to interventions. Multi-tier systems of support, AB 1200 looks just like that. We're to provide just exactly the intervention that's needed and called for and justified at the time, and get a response to that, get a response to that instruction intervention, if you will. And if we're not successful, we, the collective we, we're not successful, then we ramp that up to a different level of intervention. Your county office has been doing that. They spent all last year sending you letters in response to your interim reports, in response to your AB 1200 disclosures on collective bargaining, that said, "You can't afford this. You are in trouble." And ultimately, that culminated, because there wasn't, in their opinion, an adequate response to that, in the disapproval of your budget. So, it shouldn't have been a surprise. They informed you, they did their job, they are your partner. This isn't an us and them. They are alongside you, they want you to be successful. We all do in the work that you have. But your new board members, your returning board members, you all know this and said that. As a trustee, you have a fiduciary responsibility. You have a moral responsibility, I think, where you were words earlier this evening. And it is not only to the governance of the organization and to the financial integrity of the organization, but it is certainly also to what you do in the classroom, to Mrs. Garcia's introductory comments earlier this evening, and the focus, obviously, on our kids. You have a disapproved budget. That is currently the trigger that brought FICMAT in alongside you as a partner and alongside your county office, the county superintendent specifically, to do this Fiscal Health Risk Analysis. We don't, in this process, as Michelle will allude to and as the report certainly indicates, we don't work through all your line items of your budget and make suggestions. That's your task. That's your responsibility. What we are identifying and focusing on in this process are systems and support, or systems that support your decision-making process and the financial integrity in the school district. So, with those introductory comments and knowing kind of where we're at, I didn't say this, but the county office, I think you know this well, under AB 1200, reviews your budget when you submit it on July 1. They get three choices: approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove. And as I just alluded to, in your case, they disapproved. You are one of six disapprovals, okay, in the state this year, up from two last year, okay? When you file your interim reports, and you filed your first interim last week, right, you self-certify positive, qualified, or negative, and you self-certify negative, which is appropriate, given the status of where you're at. The county superintendent's task now, in looking at your interim, is to do their analysis compared to the standards and criteria that the state board has set and the legislature has set and put into code, and then to make a determination whether they agree with that certification or disagree. And it's a little hard to disagree with negative. It is positive, qualified, negative, you're at the far end. If you had certified positive, doubt they would agree, and they would have changed it to a different status, right? And so, that's where we're at today. I'm going to turn it over to Michelle, have her walk through the highlights of your report, and then I'll return, and then we are available at your pleasure, Madam Chair, whatever questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Fein.
Good evening. So, the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis was revamped over the summer because of the state budget, and so, what you will see in this report ahead of you are 20 risk areas that we have identified that should be on a district's radar. And these questions, there's 143 questions that we go through, as far as knowing if a district is at risk of insolvency. And so, that's what you have before you. We ended up actually with this budget disapproval cycle, doing three different Fiscal Health Risk Analysis like this around the state, just so you know, so you were not the only one. Out of the 143 questions, you received 61 no answers altogether, if you were to count through, so I did it for you. And if you go all the way to the end, you will see that you're at a 44.8%. In this case, zero is good, 100 is bad, but 40 or above means that you are at a high risk of insolvency or fiscal distress. So, that's the short version of the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis. FICMAT was actually in the district for three days, and I do want to commend your staff, because it is a very difficult process that we go through here. We ask for a lot of documents before we come in, because we really are looking at where you have been the last couple of years and where you are going. That's what the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis, based on your practices and what is actually going on. And if we look at the last couple of years, and the current, and then the future, what we really see is that something changed last year in the district. And basically, there was salary negotiations, a salary agreement, and rather than doing budget reductions, we relied on one-time funds to fund that. And I will tell you advice that we do give around the state, is that you don't base ongoing costs on one-time funds, because often what happens here, is what happened to SAC City, is that the $344 per ADA in January that you thought was going to fund a negotiated agreement didn't happen. It was reduced at budget adoption down to $185 per ADA, and so, all of a sudden, you had a district that very much was in trouble, and there were warning signs. There were warnings at the time of the adoption of the agreement, there were warnings all along through the year.
I think while you present, we're going to actually interject with some questions from board members, because I think this is some extremely important information, and I'm concerned that it will be lost if we just push through it all and then go to public comment and board member questions and comments following. So, I just want to ensure that I'm hearing you correctly, because, you know, we have been asked time and time again, what happened that resulted in the current situation of fiscal distress? And I know in reviewing your report cover to cover, we've talked about this over-reliance on one-time funds, we've talked about a growing OPEB unfunded liability, we've talked about our special education expenditures outweighing the revenues we were receiving, but that tipping point you're saying, based on the fiscal analysis that you have conducted, is that in our last year, we entered into contractual obligations that exceeded our ability to sustain those obligations post-one-time funds.
Until last year, you were doing a much better job when you entered into agreements for expenditures of either doing appropriate expenditure reductions, you were balancing the budget. But last year, you started deficit spending. I'm not saying you ever have in the past, but you were not deficit spending until last year, again, in this current trend that we did. And so, at the time of the agreement, it was told, and I saw it in the AB 1200 letters from the county, that actually, you were going to have to cut to offset this, right? Because you weren't going to have enough two years out in order to sustain this agreement. Rather than doing budget reductions, because there was a, last January, in the governor's budget proposal, there was, it was proposed that there would be one-time money. So, rather than doing cuts, yes, that was the decision, rather, at that point, to take that money instead to cover the deficit. That was the tipping point of your current financial situation now.
To rely on one-time funds. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Please continue.
So, that is a big area of the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis, right? So, your budget was disapproved, your initial budget, adopted budget, and then your revised budget, because you weren't able to sustain your reserve in the current plus-two years. And that's basically what you need to ascertain your fiscal health on, current plus-two years, just as your county office said needs to review your reports on. And so, that is why it really shouldn't be a surprise, because it really should have been a discussion all along about current plus-two. So, every year, one year moves out, right? And so, that's what happened with your adopted budget.
And can you clarify, based on the FICMAT analysis, was that of the 3.5 increase for the salary columns that was submitted to SCOWI? Or are you taking into account the interpretation from the bargaining partners that would cost it out?
I'm not taking that into account at all.
So, it is simply what was submitted?
The three-year agreement. Yes, you, this district, this board, agreed to a three-year agreement.
Thank you.
Right? So, that's what I'm referring to. I'm not referring to the 3.5 at all at this point.
I see.
Which is a potential liability, but that's a whole other issue that, not even talking about, that put this piece that I'm talking about. The problem now that this district faces, and we talk about it throughout the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis, is cash insolvency if something is not done soon, and I know Mike will talk about that. But if you read through the report, at the time of our fieldwork in October, cash insolvency, so running out of cash if appropriate budget reductions are not made, would happen October 2019. That has been, we have a new projection in the district that came out as a first interim last week, that is now November 2019. So, it's a month later, but that isn't that far away. There is time to fix this, but we are running out of time, so we try to stress that throughout the report. Basically, this district has to balance the budget by next year, by 1920. So, if you look through the different Fiscal Health Risk Areas, through the fund balance area, deficit spending, we talk about general fund current year, those are all areas that if you look at the number of questions that we ask, most of those questions are answered no for this district. So, those are major areas that you really need to work on, that all has to do with your multi-year projection, being able to afford what you've agreed to, and because it's much harder to increase revenues, your choice is you have to decrease your expenditures. That is what you have to do as a board, of course. The other areas that really stand out in this Fiscal Health Risk Analysis, if we look at the number of questions and the no answers, would be leadership. And some of those, if you look at those, are because you have a superintendent that has been here less than two years, so you've got a no answer on that. You know, he's getting closer to that. You have a CBO that's been less than two years, so that's a no answer. But also, there's no answers because of board policies, administrative regulations, how those are communicated out. So, those are all areas that are very important. Those districts that do have fiscal issues in the state and insolvency, leadership is a big part of that, so that's why we point that out in the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis.
And can I ask a question? So, you spoke specifically to a lack of board policies and some of the practices from leadership and what we know to be best practices across the state. So, can you give a couple specific examples of, in the interest of fiscal prudence, board policies? I know that we have discussed utilizing our reconstituted Fiscal Oversight Committee to establish a board policy that would, in fact, determine a level of reserve, so that we do not find ourselves in a situation of fiscal insolvency moving forward, would establish a healthcare benefit cap. Are there other examples like that that FICMAT lifts up as you do these risk analyses?
So, those are all very important policies? What this Fiscal Health Risk Analysis is really pointing to, though, is on an annual basis, looking at all of your board policies. How updated are they? Are we really following them? So, these are really good new policies to be talking about, but also looking at your existing policies.
Existing.
Yes, so that's an important piece. Another big area of this report is on position control. The overall piece of how you are tracking the cost of your positions and benefits and salaries, making sure that's being reconciled back to payroll, back to your budget, making sure all of that is actually tying together or reconciling. That is a real lack of systems here in this district to really know what that true cost is, how many open positions, really making sure your budget is accurate, making sure we are not filling or posting positions before it comes to the board for approval. There's a lot of recommendations in there for that area to make that better in the district, and that would actually help control costs a lot. There are many other areas that we talk about. Your financial system, the way you're utilizing, you escape being on a different financial system than the county, we think are all detriments to the district, and so, those are also some of the recommendations throughout the report. So, I don't know if you have any other questions on some of the specifics before Mike closes, if you want to go over any of these specific areas, because I know you've all read it, so I don't need to read it to you.
So, I do have a couple of questions, and I would encourage my fellow board members to also indicate if they have questions or commentaries by pressing the button that would queue up their comments. So, one area that really struck me as being troubling... So one area that really struck me as being troubling, given my belief in the intent of local control funding formula and the local control accountability plans as a tool for meeting the needs of our most marginalized students and involving the community in our budget decisions, was on page nine, when you call out that no evidence was provided that the LCAP and the budget are aligned with one another. Information obtained during interviews indicates that the business department has not engaged with the LCAP process in the past. Can we talk about that a bit more?
Absolutely. So districts throughout the state are still, when it comes to the LCAP process, all of our departments working together on the process. It's still coming together throughout the state, if we're going to really look at the process. In a perfect world, and we all need to get better at that, the LCAP should be reflecting what's in the budget, and all of our departments should be talking. That's still not happening in SAC City. The LCAP has a spending plan, and it's your local spending plan, but it doesn't have to tie dollar for dollar back to the budget, because your budget includes many other pieces, correct? But it's very hard to compare the two and make sure that the LCAP is in the budget the way that it's really spelled out in the LCAP, because your departments are not talking. Your budget, your staff in the budget department in business are not part of the LCAP process. So there are numbers in your LCAP budgets, what your public is deciding, that is not all the way represented the same way in the budget. Doesn't mean that you're not spending it exactly like we're talking, but there's no way to prove it.
No, and I really appreciate that source of feedback, because I think a frustration from board members has been, you know, we are asking our LCAP members to give a tremendous amount of their time and service to our LCAP PAC. And unless we can demonstrate that that time and service is actually yielding the intended results, we're doing our public a disservice, we're doing our students a disservice. And so I know that you are not in the position of giving us the best practices from a comparison standpoint to neighboring districts, but I am very interested in being able to look at exemplars so that we can right this inequity, because I found that to be a very troubling point. I also want to talk about the recognition that our special education expenditures are far exceeding our revenues. And, you know, we did have a year ago, an audit with some key findings around that. This is troubling to me on multiple levels. It's troubling to me because we have a moral imperative to serve our special education population. And on page 23, I see that you talk about the district's rate of identification of students as eligible for special education as being above average, right? Above the average of state rates. You talked about the identification rate of 14.5, with the state rate being 11.5. And so, you know, for me, that's troubling. And the first question I have is around, you know, how would that disaggregated data look, right? Because, you know, it would be very disturbing to me if I see that one population, and I've seen data in the past that would support that our African-American students are over-identified, are being in fact over-identified. And as we try and put in place the controls necessary to meet the needs of our special education students so that we are not hemorrhaging money for non-public schools, this is a really key finding. So can you speak a little bit more on that item?
We don't disaggregate the data, so I can't really speak, just your, if you look at your special education budget, you use the word hemorrhaging, your contributions are getting larger and larger every year. I would say that there is not a control on that. And even more troubling to me is that you're not charging actually the full cost of indirect to special ed. Your cost is actually higher than we would actually, than we actually see in your budget. You're not charging all of the cost to special ed that you could. Now, that would make your contribution higher, right? Because indirect charges, we're allowed to charge to our restricted program. It would make your contribution higher. So the true cost to your special ed is actually higher than we are seeing in the budget. So that is one piece that we talk about, not charging the full cost of indirect to the program.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Fine.
So easily available to you from your own staff, because they file it every December 1st, is disaggregating the very data you asked for by disability. And that actually, while it doesn't acknowledge ethnicity and gender and even grade level, there's a very telling story when you disaggregate by disability, that actually begins to paint a picture of why the program may identify some opportunities, let's say, in a positive sense, some opportunities for continuing to properly serve kids, but looking at some practices. So we spend a lot of time on special ed in the field. I think what we consistently see, that we would encourage you to focus on, if you just want first low-hanging fruit in the area of special ed that is meaningful, is the very first thing you look at is what general ed interventions are you offering? If you provide no other, if you provide no intervention tools for your general ed teachers, then when they have a student that's struggling, the only avenue is special ed. And that may be absolutely inappropriate for a given student, right? The second, so focusing on general ed, all kids are first general ed with very few exceptions, right? And you have to give your teachers the tools that they have. The second low-hanging fruit in that process, and by the way, I'm using low-hanging fruit, I'm not implying that these are easy to do, because you've got a large district. So institutionalizing this and checking it across the district will be more difficult. But the other really critical piece is what does your referral and assessment process look like? Do you have consistent student-study team processes by board policy? Starts with board policy. And then is that properly implemented, consistently implemented across the district? Because we can tell you, we're in districts all the time, and we see at School A, the TK through 3 SST team approaches something different than at School A, the same school, the SST team for grades four through six. They just take a different approach. SST, by the way, is student-study team, which is typically how referrals are made. And then for your school psychs, who generally do the assessment, do you have current protocols for them to follow? Do you have, are they being, are they all properly trained on those protocols? Are they all applying them consistently? For some unique cases, do they have some alternative protocols? We strongly believe that one protocol is good for the majority, but it is not good for every student. And then are you relying on the professional advice of the professionals? Or in that process, do you give in to outside, non-professional advice? If all those pieces are in place, then there's no reason not to rely on the professionals that you've hired and that know their job very well, generally.
Mr. Fine, I really appreciate those comments. I'm looking to Nathaniel Browning, to my colleague, board member Vang. I would like to do an assessment of what we have in place, if anything, and how we can move forward with some of these policies around the SST. I do recall in reading the audit that there was wide variance in how our SSTs were being implemented across the district, and that is quite concerning. So I appreciate that. So my final comment, and I do have another board member who has a question or comment at this time, really is around the OPEB. You know, we heard from some of our labor partners earlier that there is in earnest a desire to hear us profess that we have made mistakes as a governing board, current and past. And I think that there has been a spirit of wanting to honor the contributions of our teachers and other bargaining partners to the maximum amount that we can afford without going into fiscal insolvency. But the reality is, our OPEB is significant. We have, and I would love to hear you speak to this, one of the largest unfunded liabilities in the state of California. And I would like to know, I mean, I've heard we're second only to Los Angeles, but I'm uncertain if in fact that is the case. And that we have largely kicked the can down the road with this unfunded liability now, you know, at a staggering rate of over $750 million. And so there is this tension between, we have our LCFF full funding, we also have a requirement that we are contributing more towards our STIRS and PERS than we have in the past. And yet, we have done little to meaningfully draw down an unfunded liability that could bankrupt the district. And so can you speak a bit to that?
So you're certainly not alone in having an OPEB. Let's start there. Almost everybody has an unfunded liability, almost everybody, not quite. Yours is extremely high. I don't have it in front of me, but we can get to it pretty quick. I believe in the past year, the Legislative Analyst Office has issued a paper discussion on OPEBs. It included a chart of, if I recall, the highest 25, maybe? I may be not remitting, calling that correctly, of OPEB values. And yours would certainly be in some of the top. There are a variety of ways to deal with the OPEB liability. First and foremost, while super-conservative financial folks and accountants would love to see it funded, there is not a requirement to fund it. And let me say, fund it in advance, maybe for clarity, right? Most school districts, at a minimum, fund on a pay-as-you-go basis. What is the contribution you need to make this year to fund the commitment you have to former employees that are now retired?
Your unfunded liability doesn't continue to grow.
It continues to grow. However, it is an acceptable plan. We would certainly describe, if you have that in board action, board policy, in your budget built in on an annual basis, we would say you have a plan. Is it the ideal plan? No, probably not. But it is an acceptable plan. And actually, I don't know this, but my guess would be most school districts are in that situation. Not all, but most. How you deal with that is, you know, through the collective, in part, through the collective bargaining process. You can deal with it going forward. You've made a commitment to former employees that now have those benefits, but certainly for new employees, do you set new criteria, new eligibility with regard to post-employment? You know, what is that? You can look at that. That's a way to cut it down. You won't see the benefits associated to that joint decision for many, many years to come, right? Let me say this, in the situation you're right now, I wouldn't put OPEB on the top of your list to solve. You've got some far more basic issues you need to solve first.
And you wouldn't put on the top of our list healthcare? I mean, if you were to, based on your fiscal analysis, what would you say is the first and most pressing issue for us?
Our analysis didn't identify that. So that's not a difficult number to get, but in our analysis, we didn't identify whether you're an outlier with respect to your, either per ADA or per FTE. So per student, whatever metric you want to measure by, per student or ADA, average daily attendance, or per FTE, full-time equivalent, how you compare in the county, how you compare across the state, that's data that would be easy to obtain, but our analysis doesn't look at that. I would encourage you, as you look at budget options, that that is one of the exercises you do. You look at where your outliers are. You may find that you're an outlier in certain areas that are relatively painless to deal with. I don't know that, because we haven't looked at it. But at least go through that exercise. That's not a difficult, your staff actually may have it, it's available from, it's available from a local private consultant that you use. You can certainly obtain it from them almost overnight.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
President Ryan, I know there's going to speak, but I want to go back to your LCAP budget alignment.
Please, thank you.
Point, as kind of a standard. Let me say this, Michelle addresses taking time across the state. Yes, there are some doing it really well. There were some that did it really well the first year out. And there are some that are still struggling with that process now six years into it, right? What I would share with you on an internal, not an external, where your stake, your outside stakeholders are engaged and all that, but on an internal of how your cabinet and your divisions and departments around the district, you cannot operate, as most school districts have, for years, decades in silos. Business cannot be by itself, and HR be by itself, and instruction or CNI over here, and accountability in a different spot. They must be together on every item in the LCAP, which is what we speak to. Your business office is engaged in it only at the end of the process, and somebody brings them a list to price out. That's not right. They need to be engaged in the first conversation upfront as a total leadership team. And breaking down those silos, you cannot have a successful LCAP and have silos. Those two things just simply don't go together.
No, that's wonderful insight. Thank you. If you can stay up there, Mr. Fine, I believe we have a question for you from Vice President Minnick.
Thank you. President Ryan, I just had a couple of comments, really. First, I wanted to thank you for the way the information in this report was communicated, because not only was it extremely detailed, but, you know, I don't consider myself a fiscal expert or anywhere close. And so oftentimes, I come out of, you know, these kind of sessions with a lot of questions, and the clarity in this was really nice. And I think when, you know, folks in the public see this, they'll appreciate that as well, because that's kind of my ongoing struggle when we deal with some of the stuff. And in that same realm, to the LCAP commentary, you know, as someone who had not, you know, this was not my area of expertise, but felt strongly about the importance of that community voice in our decision-making regarding priorities, when I first came on the board, I was concerned about how the LCAP timeline adjusted, aligned with the budget to ensure that the priorities discussed by the LCAP committee were used to make sure our budget reflected those priorities. And now, in my simplistic view, thought that's what we needed to do to like, you know, make sure that it was all aligned. What I got out of this report today is, that's one piece, but that's one small piece. And the larger piece is all the things that President Ryan had just asked about, which is really aligning those priorities. It's not just about the timing, but making sure that we know what we're talking about in the LCAP and how it relates to the budget, and making sure those are consistent across those departments, those groups, those committees. And then what you just said about the not operating in silos, I think is really important. I think what we've learned over, you know, the last few months with Dr. Quinto and his leadership is that, you know, a lot of our departments were kind of operating with their own, you know, budgets or whatever, when we really needed to be working as one solid team. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, as you talked about, you know, whether we're outliers on certain factors and others, my guess is that that's where the work of our fiscal analyst from SCOWI, working with Dr. Quinto, is coming in, because what we've been hearing over the, you know, parallel to the time you've been working on this report, is exactly that. It's those details where like, you know, we're spending this much per student on this thing, and nobody else is, or whatever. So I feel like, you know, this was, your report was a snapshot in time, and I think during the time that you were creating this, our team has been really good at identifying those. And I'm sure there's a million more outliers that we're still going to come up with. So I'm hopeful that this is kind of another motivator for us to find all those spots where we stand out, and there's a far more efficient way of us to be operating. But I really do appreciate just the simplicity and the ease of the information on this. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for your work. First, Vice President Wu.
I want to thank you for your work as well. As the most senior member on this dais, if I have made mistakes in the past, I truly will apologize for them. I welcomed FICMAT. I thought it was a blessing in disguise, because there were naysayers out in these halls that did not believe our message. And now, this report is bringing to the fore some of the messages that we have been trying to push forward before. For example, you make note that the percentage of the district's general fund that is allocated to salary and benefits at or above the statewide average, we're at 91%. I mean, we have been saying that we cannot sustain- I mean, we have been saying that we cannot sustain this level of salaries and benefits, and yet, there are those that said, "We don't want to hear that." You have an $81 million surplus now, reserve. And I don't know if you're listening to some of the earlier comments today, but, you know, in weeks past, in board meetings past, some have said, "You never told us that. You never told us that you were in trouble." Yes, we did. You just refused to listen. But that's why I believe that this report is so beneficial to us, because it's independent. It highlights where we have shortcomings. But I will also say that I'm one of the first to say, "I don't know what I don't know." And so, when Mr. Fine was talking about, for example, what low-hanging fruit, special education, for example, it is those nuggets that I could certainly benefit from, because, again, I will admit that I don't know what I don't know. And so, to the extent that some of those nuggets can be identified for us, would help direct some of the attention and some of the focus that this board should be taking. And I, again, want to thank you for the report, and I'm hoping that others out there will now start paying attention.
Thank you, First Vice President Wu. Board Member Murawski.
Thank you, President Ryan. So I appreciate your work as well. This report offers, I think, a very good holistic overview of some of our fiscal habits, and I think offers a roadmap for us to correct, to be able to go from. And for those of you who haven't read or looked at the report, there's a whole, long list of over 100 questions, and they are yes, if you're a high-performing fiscal district in general, and then no, if you have issues in that area. So, we can look at a lot of those different areas where we were marked no, and there are suggestions to improve. And I am looking forward to, as the honor to be the new chairperson of the Fiscal Transparency and Accountability Committee, and I want to ask, do you have recommendations for what we address first? And there are also, a lot of these areas for improvement are administrative practices that governing board members would generally not have the level of knowledge to be able to assess whether they were being done or not, in terms of maybe assessing the type of position control we use, or some of the budgeting practices, because we are, you know, high-level policy setters. So, as we move forward and try to kind of correct some of the habits that we need to correct, what would be your advice about what to look at first, and also how we, as a governing board, can provide appropriate oversight of those practices that we may not have as detailed knowledge of?
Well, Mike wants to speak, so we're going to let him speak.
You were looking at me like you were handing it off to me.
We don't, no. You were like, so, he's the boss, but I pretend I'm the boss. It's normal for us. Priority-wise, as a board, I can tell you, you need to move faster than you are right now, because your time is running out, right? So you really need to look at fiscal insolvency, and as far as what you do first, you need to really make sure that you start to balance your budget. What this report doesn't do is help you prioritize what you should do first. But I think there's a lot of suggestions in here that can help you get started, and your staff should be able to help identify those. That is true. As a board, though, you always do need to look at current plus two years. So, you know, if we can never, if we can get anything out of a budget presentation, and then I will let you speak, sorry, is whenever we make a decision, we have to look at current, so what do today's decisions cost us in the future? And so, as a board, you may not know all of the details, but, you know, those big decisions that you have, you make, you have to make sure you can afford them in the future. And I think, you know, that's part of what happened last year with entering into agreement without them doing associated cuts, that really the story today might have been a little different right at this moment. Go ahead.
I misinterpreted the glance she gave me. We're not married, but it's like going to work every day. It seems like it's, yeah, exactly. So, I, the purpose of the Fiscal Health Risk Analysis is, it really doesn't help you identify where to start in balancing your budget. It's a systems and process-oriented document, right? And that is, and you ask an absolutely on-point question, and I love it, for your first board meeting. You, as a board, have a role. The superintendent and staff have a role. You guys, first off, and you know this, the experienced board members have to figure out where you, in the personality and culture of this district, you establish those boundaries, right? You are absolutely correct. Position control is the responsibility of the superintendent and staff, and it is not your responsibility as a board member to ensure, well, it isn't important that you ensure that policy is being followed, but not to go check on was the paperwork behind every position, right? You must, at some point, trust your superintendent. You put in place the policy. You put in place the expectation on that. You encourage the superintendent to have somebody like us or somebody else come in and verify, once you've done that work, if you want. Got a flight attendant the other day, you know, as they do their spill, and then come up the aisle to make sure that you've checked their seatbelt, says, again, just like a marriage. It's like a marriage, you know, when trust but verify, so we're going to come check. You all put your, you fasten your seatbelts, right? And so, in some respects, you've got to figure out how to balance that. And obviously, your experienced colleagues and your own leadership experience will help you guide that, will guide. But you first start with policy, ensuring that best practices. Have that conversation with staff, as you know, as do most of your colleagues around the state. You organize by various committees, and you can spend a little bit more time on a given topic in a committee. All of that's very warranted. Position control, multi, a couple of things that Michelle just said, and they're in the report. Position control, multi-year financial plans, the importance of those simply cannot be understated. Position control, you spend 91% of every dollar you receive on people. Position control's about the positions that those people hold. It's not about the people themselves. It's about the positions. And there's a very established process, as far as a best practice. The board, generally through the budget, approves positions. Starts in the budget process, the business office. And human resources follows, once you've said it's approved, and fills that position with a person. Now, we start to mix position and the name of somebody, right? And through your established salary schedules, your established board policies on where you place people on the schedules, they assign a salary to that, which the business office had already forecasted, but now, we're going to fine-tune that. And the third step of the position control process is payroll paying them according to those standards that you've set and where the person needs to be. And you should have a board policy that speaks to that, and how you affirm that. If you, when you, on your personnel register, on your board agenda, when you see it, there's nothing wrong with asking, right? Was this in the original budget? Why are we filling this job now, mid-year? Well, simple answer could be, well, the person, the incumbent has given us notice, right? So we're bringing, we've now filled it again, those kinds of things. Multi-year financial plans, Michelle alluded to, this is your tool. It's in your budget, it's in your interim reports. Unfortunately, when we're in good times, and for the state, K-14, the last six years have been better times than they have been the previous six years, right? This year being a very positive budget for K-14, that the administration and the legislature agreed on in June. In good times, less effort is put into those multi-year financial plans. In bad times, a lot of effort is put into those, because they're trying to figure out exactly where you're at. It is a leadership and management tool. Don't ignore it as just one more page in a big, thick package of financial reports that the state requires, or that your county office is reviewing. It is a tool. When your multi-year financial plan's adopted by you, laminate it and put it at each of your places. And every decision that you make, you should look at through the lens of that NYPD. We are not going to criticize last fall's bargaining agreement. If that was the right thing, and you made that judgment call to do with respect to your employees and the service that they give to your community and kids, that was the right thing. But you didn't look at it through the lens of a NYPD. You could not, you cannot afford that. Could you have taken action at the same time approving that to trim other expenses so that you could afford it? Yes. And that would be, if we have criticism, that would be our criticism. We are a year later. We've lost a year. That's really the most important thing of the past year. And so, President Ryan, you said, you asked Michelle a question earlier that I thought was just very intuitive. You used the term tipping point. You didn't say, you didn't ask the question or allude to what really gets you to this spot, but what really pushed us over the tipping spot? So in our 30 years of, almost 30 years of existence as an agency, our experience would tell you that you don't get to this condition and these circumstances overnight. Many of them, many of the drivers probably started a decade ago, started five years ago, eight years ago, were in districts where we can actually trace it back to 15 years ago, that ultimately manifests itself in the current year or last year in a fiscal problem. Okay? It is a governance and leadership problem, period. And it's many years of governance and leadership issues, not purely the last 12 months, not purely the tipping point of a particular agreement. That may have, that may have you right now on the hot seat, but it was a philosophy of how you budgeted, how you allocated resources, what all those things were, how your business office operated, and so on, for many years leading up to that. And that's real important, you understand that. It is now, though, your task to change that and clean it up. And as Michelle's alluded to, you, your backs are up against the wall. You've lost 12 months. The county's been pointing that out. Ultimately, to get your attention, they disapproved the budget. And now, you have literally weeks. So your cash forecast is, you'll run out of cash in November. Seems like a long ways away. But let me tell you, it is immediately around the corner. So let's back up from November for a second. Just think about it, just kind of plan backwards. And I'm going to skip over some technical things, and I'll cover them in a minute. But if you run out of cash, that's where we often refer to as, and you heard some speakers earlier said, "The state takeover." It's a little different than that, and I'll explain that for you in a few minutes. But your prince on a white horse will ultimately be the state who comes in and gives you a loan, because nobody else is going to give you a loan of cash to continue your operations, right? You've exhausted all your other opportunities. And so, in exchange for that, though, they're going to do some things. But to get to that point, let's focus on backing up schedule-wise, it's going to take a few months for us to figure out what your real need is, to go to the legislature, begin to work with the local legislators to sponsor an emergency appropriation bill. Let's call that, for safety's sake, just in case the forecast is off a few bucks, let's call that July 1, because we're not going to wait till November, right? Can't do it overnight. And by the way, the legislature isn't in session in November. So we've got to back up, right? For you to effect change, for you to avoid that, your first actions have to be tomorrow, literally, and the week after that, and the Friday after that, and the Monday after that, and the Wednesday after that. You have a plan that you are working towards, that you're moving through a process with your partners, with specifically your internal labor partners.
But you're saying we don't have time to work.
Well, no, you absolutely, that is the right thing to do. They are your partners. You all know that. They are absolutely your partners in this. However, what I would say to you is, you must have a backup plan, because that work takes time, and you're not in 100% control of the outcome of that. It's a partnership, right? At least two parties, or five parties, or six parties, right? And so, you must have a backup plan, and you must begin to implement your backup plan. Doesn't mean you have to go, you have to, the backup plan becomes the final plan at the end, if you're successful otherwise, but you have a backup plan, and there are some pending deadlines with that backup plan. And they are right around the corner. So, let me get back to my, my, oh, thank you. Just like at home, no. Knows right where my glasses are.
And Mr. Fine, we have a question from Board Member Pritchett, followed by Board Member Garcia.
Okay.
But I'll let you finish this train of thought, and then we'll go to those two questions.
So, kind of where do we, where do we go from here, right? I think there's a couple of focus areas, and these don't balance your budget. These, again, are systems and process. They're big thoughts, not detail thoughts. The first is, the county office is not your enemy. You must cooperate with them. You want to cooperate with them. And that includes the fiscal advisor that the county superintendent has assigned to you. They ultimately, at this point, do have some decision-making authority when they disagree with decisions you make, right? And they will, if they believe that decisions you're going to make in the coming weeks are inconsistent with a stabilization and recovery plan that you're collectively working on together, then they should exercise that authority. They have been a partner. You may not see it that way for the past years. They sent you letters, or even stood at this podium. But they are absolutely your partner, and they want what's best for your community, just as you do. They have that, they share that same goal. I know that. I know that consistently across the 58 counties in the state, because we work with the 58 county soups each and every day. You must also invest in your staff, specifically your business office staff. They're eager to do what's right. They don't have the full capacity to do that, both training, orientation, mentorship, partnerships with others, thinking about that. And so, you must invest in that. You will not make a good decision if they give you inaccurate and untimely data. You need to support them in timely, accurate data, so that you can make good decisions based on that data. We've already alluded to this, or not even alluded to it, we've been very clear about it, time is of the essence. You are, as you know, running out of cash. November of 19 is the current forecast prepared by the fiscal advisor, assigned by the county superintendent, to look at your cash position. While you, and we've just talked about this, while you have a plan, you're going to have to have a backup plan too, because you don't control either the timing or the outcome of your first preferred plan. And it should be your first preferred plan. There's, I don't think there's any question about that. I think you're on the right track with regard to that thinking. However, you've got to have a backup. You know this, you cannot kick this can down the road any further. Really, that is what you've done the past year. Even though you may think you've spent hours in agony over it, it's ultimately resulted in kicking the can down the road, and you can't continue to do that. You must solve your financial challenges, and you must do so now. What if you don't act? So let's jump back to AB 1200, where I started my comments about, big picture here. When a K-12 or community college in California runs out of cash, we call that cash insolvency. And that is actually the trigger for an emergency appropriation from the state. And that is actually the trigger for an emergency appropriation from the state. Cash insolvency is you don't have cash sufficient to meet payroll in a given month and you have exhausted all of your opportunities, typical opportunities to borrow cash from others, maybe third-party, if you will, public finance, through public finance. It may be your county treasurer, it may be your county office of ed. The code provides for each of those as opportunities for you. Given where you're at financially, the marketplace, the financial marketplace may not loan you money, or if they do, it will be very expensive. So you would certainly want to engage in conversations with the county superintendent and the county treasurer about their willingness and even availability, whether that's an available option to you. Because you're going to need to know that. And that'll be one of the first things if we come back. And the goal here is this is the last time we're at the podium, right? That is the goal. You don't want to ever, you don't want to see us again. So one of our objectives is always not to have a job, right? In, in the nature of the work we do. So cash insolvency requires the state legislature to act. That doesn't happen overnight. Alluded to that already. And in exchange for their emergency, for an emergency appropriation, the AB 1200 process, long-established process says then that because the state has now stepped in to bail you out, if you will, that they remove your authority to govern and they shift that authority now to the county superintendent. For the last 27 years, they've shifted that authority to the state superintendent. And on September, I think it was 17th of this year, the governor signed AB 1840, which changes that process. It no longer is shifted to the state superintendent, it is now shifted to the county superintendent. State superintendent still has some involvement in that they concur with some action that the county superintendent takes after that fact, a variety of actions that the county superintendent takes after that fact. In place of the board making decisions and in place of the superintendent, because that also becomes the superintendent's last day, then the county superintendent will appoint what we commonly call, what we have always called a state administrator, but now it'll be, if you will, an external administrator who will make the decisions in the district. They will act as both governing board and superintendent. Because the state cannot remove you from office, you're locally elected, you will stay in office, but you will have no governing authority. You will simply be advisory in nature. That person that the county superintendent appoints will make all of the decisions. They may, in the early days, seek your input on those decisions. They may not seek your input. As time goes, they will seek your input more and more because they want you to be engaged because through the recovery process, eventually you're going to get that local control back. There were speakers earlier that talked about, let's head down that road to state takeover. You never want to go down that path. That is an ugly, horrible path that is not in the best interest of your kids. Don't go down that path. You have time and you have the ability to not go down that path and stop this and get your house in order. You absolutely do. Time, though, is of the essence that are, those are decisions that you need to make tomorrow, starting tomorrow. You may be confused by some recent legislation I have already alluded to at AB 1840. It provided some financial assistance to two districts in the state who are struggling with persistent deficits. By the way, you don't have a persistent deficit. You have had peaks and valleys over time, right? With regard to deficits and so on, but you don't have really, I think that what we'd call persistent deficit. One of those districts for the last six years has been under state control and, and now after 1840 is now under county superintendent control, and they are living already on a state loan. So the additional assistance is, is not quite what you think. The second district that would benefit from that legislation, last night, their board certified their first interim as having no deficit. So they won't get any funds if that, in fact, is, if those numbers are true, and we have a obligation to the administration and to the legislature between now and March 1 to affirm that or to, to correct it if it's not correct, if, to correct the number if it's not right. And so don't be confused that there is some other bailout mechanism. It is the longstanding process of an emergency appropriation. By the way, that additional assistance for those, potentially those two districts, it was not an emergency appropriation. It was part of the, it, it will be part of a future state budget act, was not even in the current year budget act, or potentially a future state budget act. The other piece, and I've alluded to this, the longstanding process of shifting your governing authority to the state superintendent is no longer the process. It now shifts to the county superintendent, who is already engaged with you and already involved with you. And the county superintendent with the concurrence of some other leaders in the state then will appoint that administrator that I alluded to. Try to ignore all that because that's not the path you want to be on and not the path you need to go down. Don't do that to your community.
Thank you.
That process, just so you know, recovery is almost a decade on average. It is not an overnight recovery. It's almost a decade and that's not good for your kids, period. You have the ability to turn this around and that would be our encouragement to you. Get started tomorrow doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Fine. Board Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Ryan. Thank you for bringing all this to our attention and for this honest conversation. I agree with Member Wu that we don't know what we don't know, but what we do know is that we have seen issues. We do know that we've seen departments working in silos and we've brought this out. One thing I know that with our superintendent being only a year into this job, he is breaking down those walls and he has brought things to our attention prior to this report, such as sweeping positions and trying to solve our budget. But the next six months are definitely going to be crucial, as you stated. But what I would like to do is ask our superintendent to respond as just to what our, our plan, and I say our plan because we're all in this together. It's not just the superintendent doing this job. It's not just the staff. It's all of us together to fix this. But I'd like the superintendent to respond on what our plan is to fix these findings and what our plan is over the next six months.
So we'll have Superintendent Aguilar respond to that finding, then we have a final comment from Board Member Garcia. And I do want to recognize that we're significantly over time, but this is an extremely important topic and so it's worth every minute. And I do want to allow our public to comment as well.
Thank you, President Ryan, and thank you for your question, Member Pritchett. Let me just first thank Mr. Fine and Ms. Giacomo for their presentation, but also for spending three days with our staff and being here for countless hours as you tried to get a better sense of our situation in Sac City Unified. That is very much appreciated. And just as you said, Mr. Fine, that the county office is a partner, we also see FICMAT as a, as a partner. So thank you for that. I appreciate your commentary about this being something that may have initiated years ago, but I've also been very clear with our board and our community that everything that we face in Sac City Unified is, even while it may not have been the fault of sitting board members or a sitting superintendent, these are our opportunities and challenges to confront, and that's the spirit with which I operate every single day, even despite some of these challenges. To your question, Member Pritchett, I am very confident that we have both the will and the commitment to take action on these items. Certainly, you will not see in any future proposal from me as your superintendent in partnership with you as a member of the governance team, a proposal that looks to use one-time funds for ongoing expenses. That is not going to happen and that is a philosophy that I do not share, nor will look to scale in, in future budgets here in Sac City Unified. We have put spending freeze and have instituted a more streamlined approach to ensure that there is a cabinet-to-cabinet accountability in our district related to the budget process. The idea of position control, while it might sound wonky to our community, is an area that I identified very early on here in Sac City Unified. The idea is that we had many positions that were open or some that we had vacancies and we budgeted for those, even if we did not fill those positions. The process moving forward under Dr. Quinto's leadership has one senior staff member in the business office dedicated to making sure that we're reconciling those, those positions on a monthly basis. And I've tasked both Dr. Quinto and the Chief of Accountability and Continuous Improvement, Vincent Harris, to very quickly develop a process in which we can monitor and report, not just to the board, but to our entire community where we stand with respect to that reconciliation effort. So that will be happening moving forward as well. I also think that, just to credit some of the commentary early on, I know of no high-achieving, high-poverty district that becomes high-achieving without the kind of labor-management relations that some of our labor partners encouraged us to embrace a few minutes ago. Candidly, we don't have to look very far. We, we can look to, to the south and take a drive about five minutes from here and find a, a district where that historical commitment to a collaborative labor-management relationship has yielded much more stable budgets throughout many, many years. And I'm very encouraged and inspired that what our labor partners are calling for is for us to come together, sometimes do very basic math. How much money is it going to cost us to continue to meet the needs of our students with special needs? How much more are we going to have to plan for contributing for pers and stirs? How much more is it going to cost us without a policy that puts a cap on healthcare to offer healthcare? And how much is it going to cost us to ensure that people, because of their longevity, access step in column increases? And if the sum of those four things is higher than the funds that we get from the state, then we ought to be able to have a open and candid conversation about where we might stand with respect to the idea that we might negotiate salary increases or not. I'm deeply, deeply encouraged by the idea that that is what we are striving for through the relationships that we've begun to make with our labor-management consortium as well. Of course, there's other steps that we have, will continue to institute, but again, we will look to both the county office and our partners in FICMAT. But I'll, I'll just kind of mention those in response to your question, Member Pritchett.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. Board Member Garcia.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for this very sobering report and analysis. Many of my questions that I had earlier have already been answered. I mean, this is definitely a roadmap that, that we need to work from. And also with your responses relative to the priorities and recommendations and sort of low-hanging fruit that we can, we can work with, and of course, the timeline that we can't, you can't stress enough that this needs to be done yesterday, right? We have no, no time to spare. But I did want to get a better sense of what happens next relative to your role. Is this sort of where you leave us as we continue to work with the county office of education or, because I, I know you have a relatively different role under AB 1840, but what happens next in terms of, of you coming back and continuing to work with us?
Great question. So I want to, I want to take us back and I kind of skipped over these details, but in the current year's budget act, in the 1819 budget act, is a provision that FICMAT is to work more proactively and in a preventive way with districts in fiscal distress. And it, it very intentionally doesn't go into a whole lot of detail because as we embarked on a, kind of a new approach to doing some of our longstanding work, we worked with the administration not to put all the details there until we could kind of sort through them. But in short, we identified, in response to the administration, the legislature's questions about some surprises that came up last year with some districts, that, that the early warning system of 1200 didn't, we don't think adequately, you know, got the flag high enough, waving fast enough. We, we identified a process, a, a little bit of a new process. First, we don't, historically, we don't engage with districts without being invited by the district or by the county office, or conversely, assigned by the legislature or, or the governor or staff. The change is that under certain circumstances, we will automatically engage. And one of those circumstances, you triggered a disapproved budget. When the county office disapproves your budget, remember last year two across the 1,100 districts, this year six. So it's, it's not a frequent event, right? There are many years that there aren't disapproved budgets. That's first. At second, at interim, did you file a negative certification? That would be another trigger for our automatic engagement. Third would be if you have three consecutive qualified, qualified certifications. Fourth would be if the county office downgraded your certification. You certified positive, the county office disagreed and made you qualified, or the state department of ed made you qualified in their analysis. And the fifth would be 42127.6, which we commonly all refer to as the lack-of-going concern provisions in the code. When a county superintendent declares that you are a lack-of-going concern, which is a very technical accounting term, the code doesn't use that term, but it is that it's almost equivalent to a negative certification, except that it can happen at any time during the year, not just at the interims. Under those circumstances, we will now automatically engage, whether you like it or not, by doing this, this analysis, using the fiscal health risk analysis tool. So the first simple answer to your question, Member Garcia, is that we've completed that work in being here tonight and delivering that report to you. The reality is, we're on the phone with districts and county offices every day across the state who are struggling with something. Your superintendent and I talk regularly, the county superintendent and I talk regularly, the county's fiscal staff and I talk regularly, our staff and the fiscal advisor, we know very well that, that the county's assigned to you, communicate regularly. We have a pretty good sense of where you're at, where you're headed, what your conversations are. Are we here monitoring? Are we watching all your board meetings and monitoring your decisions? That's actually the task by job description and code of the fiscal advisor that's been assigned to you by the state. And so as we communicate with them in the county office, we're getting those updates. We will do whatever we need to do to provide assistance to you and for you and be a partner as your superintendent's used and along with the county superintendent. Our success is that you don't go any further down the path, right? That is success. Success for you, success for us, success for Superintendent Gordon. And so that's And so that's where we want to be, and whatever that takes, we're committed to doing that. That's the nature of the work we do, as you know. Between Michelle and I, we've been in probably six communities just today, although we did start out together in a meeting this morning. By the time we've, you know, and in the course of getting here tonight, we've had conversations with the largest district in the state. We've had conversations with small districts in the state, you know, as we crisscross and travel each day. So a little bit more complex and not clear answer, but the first is, under this engagement, our work ends tonight, but we will be here first thing tomorrow morning, whether on the phone or in whatever your superintendent and the county superintendent or our friends down the street ask us to do.
Thank you, Mr. Fine. Do we have any public comment at this time, Mr. Barrios?
Yes, we do. We have two public comments. First up is Bob Hamas, followed by Cecile Nunley.
Good evening, Board members. There's really nothing more specific I can say than is in the report that you've just, that you've seen and that you just heard about. So I just wanted to say that Making Sense Work fully supports this board and the staff that we have now. We think we have a great team that can really work together to solve this problem. And, you know, we look forward to partnering with you in any way that we can. Any committees or groups that you're, will want to invite us to work with, we're more than happy to participate.
Thank you, Bob.
So the other thing I just wanted to say as well that, you know, I hope, continue to reach out to SCTA as much as possible. You know, it's, I'm not involved in any of the discussions or communications, so you know, it's, all we hear is about what they say and what you say at the board meetings and stuff. So I hope that, like I said, you continue to reach out and try and communicate with them as much as possible. You know, I don't know what the possibility of somebody showing up at SCTA tomorrow at 4:00 is, but I hope, you know, that someone will at least consider being the first person to walk across the aisle and meet with SCTA. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We appreciate your comments.
Yeah, let's see. Is this on? Because I did prepare, and you guys may say I'm a little mean on here. I don't know if it comes on.
Go ahead and try and turn that on. And Elliot, as you're dealing with that technology issue, I just want you to know that I have the board members listed out of order. So I believe that Board Member Morowski is asking to provide another comment, but it's listing as Board Member Minnick, so we need to correct that as well. No.
Oh. Okay, well, this is, as you said, a very critical area, and it did deserve the time that you gave to it. I was a little nervous when I saw, because I saw the FICMAT report and I thought, oh, Mike won't show up, so I don't have to do anything. And then I did this whole little analysis or my observations, and I felt like, am I reviewing his work? Oh, my God, no, 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 that's not what I'm doing. But anyway, there are just, I put my observations together. It's by no means a critique. It's just those things that stood out to me that were so critical I thought should be reinforced. And then there's a couple of items that I thought were so critical or that I had some concerns about because I had a different viewpoint. One of them, you mentioned yourself, President Ryan, where you mentioned the LCAP. And the LCAP reconciliation was not available, that it had been done, is I believe what they said in their report. And for me, that resonated with me because I've been on the LCAP advisory. And I remember specifically asking staff, is there a reconciliation with the budget? And I was told at the time, yes. So I'm not sure what was said or delivered to FICMAT, but I know that I was told, yes, that's there. The other item that caused me a big concern was number six, compliance with government codes for public disclosure of the bargaining agreements. I remember vividly the night that SCTA's budget was approved and we were here. And I remember getting all of the backup for that the night of the board meeting. And so that caused me concern because from what I understood, that should happen the 72 hours before the board meeting because the public is supposed to have that available. So even though it said in the report, yes, for me, I wasn't so sure about that. I would have answered it a lot different because I didn't think that was quite correct.
Thank you, Ms. Nunley. I just want to have you conclude your remarks because we do have a principal here from Luther Burbank who's been waiting two hours past the time for his presentation.
Okay, all right. I promise I'll be quick.
But we do have your document before us.
Can I do, just those last two?
Wrap it up.
I promise. The other thing was on the enrollment projections was one issue. And we talked about that as far as the numbers and everything else. And then the other thing was, the one that I have highlight, or no, I don't have it highlighted there. On enrollment projections, it said about the budget calendar having appropriate things. And it's still one of the things that you guys passed, this budget calendar at the last board meeting. However, enrollment is not on here at all, and it's one of those critical things that I really do think should be on there. And then the last thing is internal controls because they talked about internal controls and limiting access to the financial system. And I think that's so critical.
And Cecile, I hope that you will be an active participant in our Fiscal Transparency and Accountability Committee. I think that your perspective as a former CBO is invaluable, and I appreciate your service. So thank you.
Oh, okay. And the other thing is, Michelle is really great. She came to Vallejo and she worked with us and my staff, and she's really great at training. So if you ever want something, that's a plug for Michelle. She's great.
Well, and on that note, I think we have a final question from Board Member Morowski, particularly about this idea of providing capacity building for our CBO and business office.
Thank you, President Ryan. Yes, it's just to follow up on a comment you made, Michael, about investing in our business office staff. One, again, another thing that is very valuable to hear directly from you as you've had the opportunity to really review what we have against what we, what we need or ideally should have to get accurate financial information and so forth. So I would love to hear in as much specificity as you can provide, specific recommendations about, you know, what does that mean? You know, is it too few people? Is it not the right skills? Is it more training of the people we have? You know, what's short-term versus long-term? Any comments on that?
So maybe something that we follow up with the superintendent in some more detail that can get back to you. But I think generally, a couple of observations. As we, as we work through this, we are not convinced you've always had timely, accurate data. The attitude is not the issue. I want to be clear about that. That's why I said they're eager to do what's right. But timely, accurate data to a decision-maker is absolutely critical. Your county office has stepped in, both through the fiscal advisor and the county office and staff to support them in moving in that direction. So I would say that's their first partner, always should be their first partner, actually, is their county office. That's about a relationship, more than it is all the documents and the data. It's about a relationship and a trusting relationship. And so they need to listen to the county office. If they have a difference of opinion, have that conversation. But having an argument over it isn't, isn't appropriate. The fiscal advisor that's been assigned is very experienced and very skilled, is an excellent resource for your staff. Even though that's not specifically your job duty, she's nonetheless an excellent resource for your staff. Beyond that, there's all the traditional trainings, mentorships, all those kinds of things, but all take time. You've got an urgent issue. And so you really have to almost expand your staff to incorporate the county office, incorporate their fiscal advisor that's been assigned to you, and just all together work. And to whatever extent we can help with that, we will do that. If you've got some key players, and I'll work with your superintendent on this, that would, could take advantage of even some of our formal training and mentor programs that we do. Those deadlines to apply were actually last week. But if there's one or something like that, that we can get into that, it's actually based here in Sacramento, so for you, it's really convenient. They don't have to travel. We'd be happy to do that. But again, that's a long term. It's a year-long program that doesn't start till May. So county office, the fiscal advisor, anything that we can do that our staff available to respond to calls.
Thank you, Mr. Fine. I just want to close out this item by appreciating your time and commitment to helping us write this fiscal ship. I think it was a sobering presentation. Beyond all of the issues that we discussed, it is very apparent to me that the sense of urgency with which we need to act needs to be the utmost consideration. And with that, I want to reaffirm our commitment as a governance structure to putting in place the policies and practices necessary to ensure that we can meet fiscal solvency and avoid state receivership. And so I think you're going to see a lot of cross-collaboration between the Policy Committee and the Fiscal Transparency and Accountability Committee. And we will probably be calling upon you. We already rely on Teri and her team quite heavily, but calling upon you regularly in the coming weeks and months. And as we move on to our next item, I do just want to say, recognizing Mr. Fine's call to action and urgency and how behind we are, we are not having another board meeting until January 17th. And it is unconscionable to me that we would wait to act until January 17th. And so I think we need to reassess a special board meeting as well as weekly meetings of our Fiscal Transparency and Oversight Committee to take some immediate actions and not pause because we think that the world stops during the holiday break when we have such a pressing matter before us. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time tonight. Item 9.2, College Application Process Update. Vincent Harris and Christina Espinoza. We're also very proud to have with us tonight one of our best principals in the district, Principal Peterson. I am so sorry to keep you here so late on a school night.
Don't start that clock. Stand up. I'm serious. Stand up. When I go into a fifth or sixth period class, if they've been sitting for hours, just take a deep breath. Let it out. Another deep breath. Let it out. That means you guys too. All right, now you just start the clock.
You got it. You got it.
All right. Good, great, great start. Thank you for the stretch break. Good evening, Board President Ryan, Board Member Superintendent Aguilar. My name is Vincent Harris. I'm the Chief Continuous Improvement Accountability Officer. I'm joined by our Director of Guidance and Counseling, Ms. Christina Espinoza, and of course, joined by our principal at Luther Burbank High School, Mr. Jim Peterson. It's my pleasure this evening to take you through an exciting opportunity to update you on an initiative that really was launched last year, actually on December 11th, 2018. And this is our College Futures Foundation partnership, which basically is, basically giving us the ability to do real-time data exchange of student information. And so tonight's presentation will focus on one element of our data exchange, specifically college applications, because right in that season of college applications being submitted by our students. And actually, it's happening even as we literally speak because of extensions that both the California State University system has done in terms of their due date of December 15th and also University of California has said specifically. So we're actually giving you a data that's still in process. And so we'll talk about some of the constraints that come with that because, of course, some of this data is still, we're still evaluating and looking at it. But we're excited to report on the work of our teams and actually of our institution of higher learning partners or our colleges and universities in supporting our students. And it's important to note, obviously, there's been data exchanges with Sacramento City Unified and our various regional partners for years. We're just celebrating this one specifically this evening. So as I mentioned, this is an exciting time to give you kind of the first annual update. And it's the opportunity to really see how this partnership works. And so you see listed on this slide, no small achievement in terms of all of the signees to our partnership in MOU of the data sharing. And then actually, we have an institutional partner or a strategic resource, Educational Results Partnership, which actually helps us with the infrastructure. They partner very closely with our technology team in helping us build out the infrastructure, actually share the data, which is obviously the real backbone of this initiative to a large degree. And we'll talk about some of that data we've seen recently. And the power of it is that we've actually had data exchanges between all of our partners, at least one, and in some cases, up to five. And so in the first year of any initiative, you know, you always have kind of that challenge of the first-year startup. And so we've gone through that. But what's really important to know is that we've actually shared college application data, and there's going to actually be other milestones that we're excited to do throughout this partnership. This next slide just gives you kind of the overview of one strand of post-secondary choice. And so this is just one post-secondary choice, and this relates to the college application process. And many of you are familiar with this. Really, we talk about what students are eligible, and that kind of comes through the work that they've done as K-12 students. And then we move into how do they manage that transition? And so right now, we're very intensely focused on the application season. And hopefully, our students, you know, in the spring, as you can see the dates there, will hear from their universities in terms of admissions. That then will lead us into another season of support in terms of the matriculation process because I know it's really important that as our students have the opportunity to be admitted, what really matters equally is making sure we support them through the process of actually doing the requirements necessary to fulfill their admission. And then, of course, obviously, enrollment then is a major milestone that we all celebrate as our students' transition. This next slide just basically gives you further detail. And so it makes those things that I showed on the previous slide much more concrete. And so you'll see that it's really important in terms of the season we're in, college applications. And so right now, we're doing hands-on support, as I mentioned, for particularly our CSU and University of California applications. And of course, the overall, University of California ended on November 30th. But again, UC Merced extended theirs to December 15th. But right now, we're doing real-time work to support our students in this journey. And then you can see there's other milestones. FASFA is another important opportunity as we think about the equity in terms of resources for our students. And then you see the description very specifically as it relates to the other major steps. We've actually included other steps that really relate to the power of this partnership because obviously, it's not just about college applications. It's not just about enrollment. But you'll notice really the final three elements highlighted here really speak to the partnership because we have an opportunity really to track our students and partner with them as they enroll, but also persist. And then as we all in this community will celebrate, the degree attainment. We know that this end game is not just sharing data for the sake of sharing the data, but it's really sharing data to support our students. And so a lot of the data points that we bring back to you as it relates to this specific memorandum of understanding will help you better understand how we're deconstructing things, sharing data with each other to help us support our students in terms of curriculum potentially, as we think about, you know, classes that students take at Sacramento State or Los Rios, and where we look at persistent rates in terms of how our students doing, what classes they might struggle in, particularly maybe, maybe math or English. And that'll give us an opportunity to think about it with our curriculum instruction team about what things we can do perhaps to align curriculum more tightly. I know the board and community is aware of the California Dashboard being released. We're just taking the opportunity to lift one measure. There are several measures on the California Dashboard. We will be giving a general presentation in a relatively recent upcoming board meeting. But just wanted, again, to highlight the performance specifically as it relates to the graduation measure and our performance versus the state. And then obviously, our overall district performance. The dashboard, as it's set up, really is meant for districts to land ideally in green and obviously, where you're overperforming in blue. And so you can see in graduation rate, we've successfully moved into the green category there. Hopefully, continuing to build that momentum in this partnership allows us to do that in terms of building success for our students. This gives more of a historical view of our graduation rate trend. And so you can see here, as we disaggregate by major student groups in terms of performance over the last four years or so, you can see the trend obviously has had some ups and downs. As a system, we're focused on this most current, recent-year trend where we're seeing improvement in general across subgroups, certainly not where we want to be in terms of a final destination. But we're really focused on what are those things necessary to support our students, to get more students to graduate. You know, we talk about the guiding principle. It's about this equal opportunity to graduate for our students, and this is our fulfillment of that in terms of really looking at the data and disaggreging the data. And obviously, as we've shared with the board, there's other disaggregations of the data as well that we're looking at in terms of ensuring our students have an equal opportunity to graduate. I'll just point to the small boxes. You've seen these in other presentations, but they really speak to our aspirations. The first box, this notion of equal performance, really gets us notion that we want all of our students to be high-achieving, want all of our students to be improving. But we recognize the equity condition speaks to the gaps that this board's called out that we must close. And so that's why the final box you see to the far right... And so that's why the final box you see to the far right, this notion of an equity-oriented thinking is where we see improvement, but also accelerated closure. And that really matters. And so a lot of the work we're doing is how do we unpack the work we're currently doing to not just get sustainable achievement, but also to accelerate closure of gaps. This gives you a sense of, you know, this notion of the widest array of options. We use A through G completion as a proxy for that because we know that there's a level of rigor in using A through G completion. And so this gives you the sense of the two-year cohort rate, and where we've seen some growth. But what's important to take away from this slide, I would argue, are really two things. One is we know that to some degree, we have significant gaps in our system. And so as you compare the highest performing student group of Asian to all the way over to the far right in terms of American Indian, and really frankly, you look at African-American, American Indian, you can see, you know, this notion of we still have significant gaps in A through G completion. And so we're looking at this work, trying to, you know, make sure we focus on why the gaps exist, and then focus very specifically on how do we close the gaps, recognizing that A through G completion speaks to this notion of, you know, as you increase more A through G courses, that increases your ability then to apply to a wider range of California State Universities and Universities of California. And so related to that, we've done some internal work within our district, and we spent a little bit more time going through this in our college eligibility letter presentation. So in the interest of time, I won't seek to totally repeat, but I think what's important here is our opportunity to use data, both publicly available data from our university partners. And so what we've been able to do is really profile, what does it mean to be eligible? And really looking very deeply, and we've grouped them in terms of looking at this notion of most selective, which we call Group A, to less selective, which we call Group D. But what we've done is basically taken Sacramento City graduates, we looked at a four-year trend, thanks to using data from the National Clearinghouse, and we basically have profiled students who are at universities that we know are selective. And this is drawn from data that both the California State University and University of California publishes in terms of admissions, SAT scores. We basically build a profile of Sacramento City graduates. Again, we have a four-year profile using graduates from 2013 to 2017. We basically have said, okay, so a Sacramento City student who is at UCLA, who is at Cal State Long Beach, who is at Cal State Fresno, what is their academic profile? And so we basically have used the data from the National Clearinghouse to identify where the students are, and then we use our own internal data to say, okay, here's their profile. And then we apply that profile average then to our current graduates. And so this is how we're able to do that kind of targeted support in terms of saying to our students, you know, we know that you have a right to apply wherever you want to, but if we look at your academic profile here on a kind of a selectivity perspective, here are places where we know your profile makes you viable. Doesn't guarantee admission, of course, but makes you viable. And we recognize that some of our students have lots of choices they're choosing from. So this is no way trying to say they must apply to these universities, but it's just trying to make sure they're aware of their choices. And then we recognize as well that there's private universities that students would like to apply to. And so we, again, use the A through G as a proxy simply because there is no national standard. So we're basically pulling something that we think is vetted well in terms of A through G completion and use that as a proxy for our students. But we definitely want our students just to know that they have that widest array of options available to them. And then you can see some disaggregation as we look at subgroups again. You know, frankly, the theme that we heard in our financial presentation as well is that we know that when we look by student, we see inequities. And certainly, as we think about the notion of applying properly, we see inequities there as well. And so that's work that we're very diligently working on to close those gaps as well. Now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Christina Espinoza. She's going to take you through actually some of the real work that's gone here in Sacramento City Unified.
Good evening, and welcome, members Garcia and Murawski. So this is more of the practical aspect of the job. So for counselors this year, they've historically done great work and brought colleges and universities into school sites to present and walk students through the college application process. This year, what we asked and was a little different was that we ensured that we brought in representation from all four segments of higher ed. So we ensured that there were presentations made available to students from Los Rios Community College District, the CSU system, the UC system, and then a variety of private colleges and universities to ensure that students received information from all four segments. In doing that, leveraging the UC Merced tools that they have access to, we asked that they would be a little more intentional this year in inviting students based on their eligibility. So this slide just simply provides a breakdown of the total number of seniors enrolled. And then for, in this particular case, for targeting students for the CSU application workshops, we ran for them exactly who those students were. And then the last column there just simply shares the percentage of students who met the minimum eligibility requirements for a CSU. So this was just a more intentional use of data and targeting that counselors use to invite students to college applications, workshops. As mentioned, counselors were providing hands-on application workshops throughout this last semester, the last couple of months. But we also know that some students are not necessarily eligible for a four-year university, or some students are off track for graduation. So we're already having conversations for, with our alternative ed sites to make sure that we're providing or reaching out to students who perhaps are off track for graduation or simply don't want to go to college, and they are, you know, wanting to explore workforce options or apprenticeship programs or other private colleges or universities or different vocational schools, or even our Charles A. Jones Career and Education Center across the street. So we're having those conversations right now. And we also intend on conducting the senior survey where students will have the opportunity to complete and communicate back to us whether or not they have a plan or did they in fact apply to a college or university. One of the limitations that I'll speak to later in the presentation is that our data exchanges and information are limited to those colleges and universities here in our region. So if a student applied to a college outside of our region, we don't have real-time data for that yet. So this gives us an opportunity to catch those students who, as of right now, still have not applied somewhere and are still interested and haven't, don't have a post-secondary plan. And that's inclusive of workplace, you know, I'm sorry, the workforce or other programs. This is just a screenshot of the tools that counselors have available to them right now. And as part of our data exchange agreements, we are able to actually populate this tool and give counselors the ability to identify which students have applied to a college or university in real time. And this will also be populated with the senior survey information once we capture it from students. And this will be the first year that we could actually collect from all of our students exactly where they applied. Last year, we had historical enrollment data, but we didn't have live application information. And Mr. Peterson is going to share the amazing work that his team pulled off this year, so...
Thank you. Good evening. So these are some of the things that... All right. Everybody. Okay, so these are some of the things that we've done to get our percentages up when it comes to applying for four-year universities. So you see up here, the school-wide college application part of the process. We have community college, CSU, UC, as well as private colleges and university staff come in, and they meet with our students. And over the course of the year, we had 16 sessions so far with that personnel. We also have individual and small group support. And you can see there's flexibility, there's ongoing, ongoing after-school support. Counselors are available from 3:00 to 5:00, and they allow students to come in so they can work on that. And students also were supported during the day as the deadline drew near. The reason why I'm going through this rather quickly is because this is not where you get the bang for your buck if you want high numbers. So do you guys want to hear the secret how to get high numbers? Dr. Iris called me tonight and goes, you're coming in and you're sharing the secret. I go, I want to share the secret because I want more options for my kids. You're coming in and sharing the secret. So I'm here and I'm going to share the secret. It's, and it's actually not my secret. It's stolen from Ted Appel and Mycie Lee's West Coast offense, which is, they did this for years. I'm just, I'm lucky enough to take over three, four years ago, and I have an unbelievable counseling team and lead teacher team. And it's a, it's not an opt-in model. Don't, don't try to, I mean, get the kids excited about college, show them the opportunities, but don't rely on them to come in. Kidnap them, do whatever you have to do to get them in. So what our counseling team did this year, it was on a Tuesday, and they had, the week prior, they had gone through all the names, not just of students who were A through G eligible, who were CSU eligible or UC eligible, and not just the ones who are borderline, but if they are close at all, get them on a list and then have passes ready and just blanket, go out, you're going out, you're giving them passes, and you're bringing those kids out. On day one, the team had F8, which is a large computer lab. It's like two computer classes in one, and they were constantly, they were sending out passes. If a kid didn't show up, they'd go out and look for them, and they'd bring them in. And even if you have something, a kid come in who says, oh, no, no, I know I'm A through G eligible, but I'm going to the Marines. The counselors do, and lead teachers do a great job explaining to the concept of the widest array of options, and that's fine. We promise you, the Marines are not going to kick you out if they find out that a CSU or a UC accepted you. So just bringing them in, and then a tough thing, you got to make sure they click the submit button, because some of the kids will come in and they'll come out and they'll go, oh, wow, that was great. I did it. And they didn't click the submit button. So those are the key things. We had a total number of 12th grade students, 181. The total number of applicants to CSUS was 165. Total number of progress applications, 13. So using the targeted use of data, we ended up with 91% of Luther Burbank High School students submitting an application to CSU.
Amazing.
Thank you.
So again, these are, you know, they were actively sending me pictures, and I know they're a little pixelated because those are real students in a real computer lab at Burbank. So, you know, you can't see the faces of the students, but it was great to see the work as they progressed through it. So I'll go very quickly. This is all live data, and it's in progress. So currently, what we have access to is in the first column, these are the number of students who to date have applied to the Los Rios Community College District. So that's 429 students. As far as applications to CSU Sacramento, 542, applied to UC Davis, 424, and then applied to UC Merced, that's 195. So this is high level, our total number of applications. Just know that these numbers are subject to change. Some of the deadlines obviously were extended to December 15th. Now, this is a little more sobering, at least for me. This is the real data, and we've compared it now because we have access to, at least for UC Davis, Merced, and CSU Sacramento, the number of applicants for the 2017-18 year compared to where we are right now. So, you know, I'd like to point out that for CSU Sacramento, we're significantly behind where we were last year. So we have a few more days until the application cycle closes, but this is definitely a great opportunity that we've leveraged over the last few weeks to ensure that we were actively communicating with our sites exactly who had submitted the application, which applications were still in progress. And as late as like last Wednesday, brought a team of principals and counselors together to really develop an action plan for supporting students. But this is something that we'll learn from, you know? And like I said, well, Saturday is the deadline, and we have been getting files from Sac State on a regular basis. So we're eagerly awaiting what tomorrow's file will show, and then on Tuesday of next week as well, to see where we land. I do want to outline that the 17-18 data is year-end. So that was at the end of the 17-18 academic year. So this isn't to-date comparison. So, you know, last year, November 30th, I can't say that that was the total number of applications, that was just for the entire year. So that might also impact some of the numbers. But again, this is an opportunity to really study the data and get a better understanding of what contributed to it, and this is our first year collecting it, so... And just really quickly, some of the lessons learned through this process, there was definitely a need for clarity among all of our partners to really understand what data points we needed. We were pretty clear because we've done this work before as far as what we needed, but there is some learning on behalf of our partners as far as how they can leverage the data that we have to share. The delays in exchanging the data, right? So this work moves very quickly, and our counselors need the data on a daily basis, but so that we could target students very intentionally because the window is so tight. So the sense of urgency may not be the same with our higher ed partners. So that was a little challenging. And for, in some cases, we received the information after the deadline. So we weren't able to really impact the numbers. And then, again, as mentioned earlier, the limitation regarding the students who applied to other CSUs. We know that not all of our students, for example, are going to apply to Sac State. So how do we, you know, identify students who apply to other CSUs or other campuses, private colleges and universities in a timely manner so that we could provide supports to students? So that will be an ongoing challenge. But like I said, once we get the survey out, we'll be able to identify exactly who's applied. So with that, do you have any questions?
Do we have any board, sorry, do we have any public comment at this time, Mr. Barrios?
No public comment.
Okay, so we do have some board member questions and comments. Board Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Ryan, and thank you for this presentation. This is great work. I just have one question. If what we're doing at Burbank is going so well, what are we doing to ensure that it's at all of our high schools?
Well, again, this is the first time that we actually collect data during the application cycle, so that's exactly what we hope to replicate. That was successful. We were able to, I get the numbers, I think, two days before November 30th. And at that point, actually, at the last principals' meeting, Mr. Peterson was able to share with some of his colleagues exactly what his team was doing. But again, moving forward, we could definitely share some of the best practices across the sites. And not to, not to say that other sites aren't doing the same thing, but we definitely saw the results pretty early on in this process.
That number's pretty high.
Yeah.
So, and if we could just wrap it up and, you know, and do like an owner's manual and say, this is what we're going to do, that'd be fantastic.
I love that there are three days to follow. Besides that big day, you, the counselors and lead teachers, they have like a computer lab, they continue to bring kids in throughout the week. So it's not that, now one day is the big one, but just keep following up.
Yeah. I agree. And I think that I totally understand this is your, you know, the first year doing this, and this is fantastic, and I congratulate you all on your work and the success of this. But I do think that really, we need to like package that up and roll it out to the rest of our high schools and make sure they're doing it exact the same way because it worked.
Yeah.
Right? Thank you.
Board Member Pritchett. I have a couple of comments, and then I believe we have a few other board members who would like to also weigh in. I want to first commend the team on what I think is pretty remarkable. When you look at through an equity lens, the movement we've seen in students meeting UC/CSU requirements, in particular, the gains that we've seen for our Latinx students. So looking at the 2016-17 cohort data, 33.6% A through G college-ready. Now, a year later, 42.4%. I mean, that is something that we should be celebrating. I know we've talked about the increase in high school graduation rates despite the challenges we've faced in the district over the past year and a half with Superintendent Aguilar's leadership. This is something that should be celebrated, and I hope to see gains that trend upwards more significantly for our African-American students, because for me, the movement of 1% is, you know, less exciting. And I, the question becomes, why aren't we seeing the same level of improvement for that student subgroup? I want to really appreciate Principal Peterson for going above and beyond. I remember years ago when an article was written about your focus on increasing college eligibility for our students. And there was an addendum to that article, which was, but, once the students leave Luther Burbank, they are ill-prepared because they end up placing intermedial coursework. And there is a whole body of research that shows when we just use your data, which is high school GPA and transcript, and place students directly into college level, they succeed. And they succeed in large numbers. And so we now know with the CSU executive order, with AB 705, and with the data sharing agreement that we were able to put in place over the course of the last year but took seven years to develop in Fresno, we can provide that real-time data that will allow students to bypass remediation and go into college-level coursework right out of the gate. And I think that that is really something to be excited by. And then my final comment is really about the data surrounding at this moment in time, because we know the eligibility deadline was extended for the CSU, what seems to be a significant trend downwards in local applications to Sac State. I definitely want to... I definitely want to dig into that data point more. I know that in speaking with President Nelson, he has said that he received 30,000 first-time freshman applicants for 3,000-plus slots. And so, there is a real capacity issue here, and I worry that as more students here, that you might meet the eligibility criterion and be turned away due to no fault of your own, they choose not to apply to Sac State. Now, I am encouraged by the fact that President Nelson, with our data-sharing agreement and the commitment to do things like partner on the college promise and promote the associate degree for transfer at our community college, is talking about, could we have dual admission? So, students are starting at Los Rios and then seamlessly moving into Sac State because of the capacity constraints. And I hope that we'll continue to explore that conversation. And you spoke to the absence of the ability to analyze real-time data, you know, for other campuses. I think it's remarkable what the superintendent, because of his partnership with UC Merced, and, you know, the substantial investment he brought from College Futures Foundation with him when he became our superintendent, was able to build. But, I am very concerned that absent an intersegmental statewide longitudinal data system, we're still guessing about the campuses where we haven't established one-to-one matches or MOUs, and that is going to be really hard as we're trying to assess our impact. Board Member Mabing.
Thank you, President Ryan. I just have a comment and then a question. First, I just want to give a shout-out to Mr. Peterson. I think, you know, many of our students, our high school students, Sac City Unified School District, you know, don't have the opportunities, right? And I think oftentimes, we can't depend on luck, right, to make sure that our students actually get into college. And I think what we're doing at Sac City Unified School District and what Luther Burbank is doing is actually creating that system change to ensure that we don't, you know, we don't actually base it on luck, to ensure that every student actually can go to college. I also want to say, you know, it does, aside from system change, it also takes an incredible team to be able to get the outcomes that we see tonight. It takes teachers, it takes one-on-one with counselors, and incredible leadership at the school-site level, like Mr. Peterson, to be able to get these outcomes. And so, I just want to publicly acknowledge Mr. Peterson for the incredible work that he's done at Luther Burbank, not just as a principal, but I also have to say, he also has the classroom experience because he's been in the classroom for a really long time before he became the principal at Luther Burbank. And so, I want to give him a shout-out for that. I did have a question regarding the senior survey that you discussed about in your presentation, and I wanted to know, there's, so I have several questions. First is, are all the seniors taking this survey? That's the first question. And I do wonder, there's a question under the Student Support Services that asks if the student has a post-secondary plan. And I'm wondering, you know, it is a senior survey, but are we asking maybe even our high school students earlier, even though, obviously, we want them to have the widest array of options? I wonder if asking them as a senior is a little bit too late regarding their post-secondary plan, and if we're doing anything before their senior year, right? Or we're catching any of those students? Because I do think waiting, I mean, taking the survey at senior year might be, I think it's great that we're doing the survey, first of all, but it might be a little too late, and I wonder if we're doing this earlier to catch some of our students to help them plan for our post-secondary plan yet.
So, currently, in what we have planned is counselors already walk students through, like, all of the CCGI lessons. So, the design is that from 7th through 12th grade, there is information shared about developing or exploring careers and college options and developing plans and develop, or doing research on colleges and universities as they progress from 7th through 12th grade. So, we're hoping that, and this will take some time, right, as kids progress through our system, and we're implementing the lessons by counselors in the classrooms for these students, that by the time they reach their senior year, it won't be the first time that they're receiving this type of information. But, we have not explored actually a survey, per se, in earlier years, but it's something we could explore. I think in my previous experience, we used to conduct a survey at these, you know, the second semester of the junior year, just to get an idea of what students wanted, you know, to pursue come senior year so that we could prepare, so that's something that we could definitely explore.
Great. Thank you. Board Member Garcia.
Yes, thank you. So, just a couple of questions. You mentioned that you received data late from your partner, so some students missed the deadline application. What are the, no?
No. So, we weren't able to get real-time applicant data during the cycle from some of our campuses, and that's just by virtue of how their system works and how they're uploaded into the central processing center, and then their inability to download applications. So, for CSU partners, it was a little easier for them to download applications, and from Los Rios, the same, because they're using the same platform. So, it's more from a technical perspective that their inability to share with us in real time who had applied and who hadn't. But, the supports were still provided, and the deadlines were still communicated to students, but it was more from a technical perspective, our ability to receive that data.
Okay. So, I guess I'm just concerned that, I don't know if there's been a deeper analysis to make sure that no students missed out because the data from the higher ed institution partners didn't come in real time or in a timely manner for you to go and identify those students, pull them out, and make sure that the applications were being completed and submitted. So, thank you. My next question for you is, you are tracking completion of the application, submission of the application. Are you also tracking enrollment and completion of college? So, is that, is that something where you're planning to?
Those are our next steps. So, we're following the matriculation timeline. So, right now, the conversations with our higher ed partners, we're get, you know, getting access to the application data, but we will then start asking for questions related to whether or not the students were admitted, whether or not they submitted their intent to register, and then following the matriculation timeline.
But, we are utilizing case studies to be able to build out that real-time information as students progress through the system.
Yes. So, on the students' dashboard, you'll see, I mean, they did away with the ELM and the EPT, for example, at the CSU system, right? So, we have to update that. But, as we get the information as far as who was admitted, FAFSA completion, we're monitoring and populating the student dashboards. So, we will be working with our higher ed partners to start getting that information as well, once the application window closes.
I don't think we have any other board member comments or questions. I do want to say it's important to note that where we are with the data dashboards we've built, the MOU and the data sharing, is light-years away from where most districts are in the state of California. And I think one of the biggest challenges for our new board members is people would like to be able to replicate what we're doing regionally, and we don't have the capacity to support other districts in doing it. But certainly, it's a wonderful way for us to proof-test this model, and then, you know, hopefully provide some guidance to other districts who are hoping to also increase their college eligibility rates for their students. Thank you so much for your hard work. We really appreciate it. And Mr. Peterson, thank you for staying with us so late this evening.
Next time, we'll try not to wear Kennedy colors.
I love it.
I think Superintendent Aguilar has a final comment.
Thank you, President Ryan. I just wanted to echo the statement that you made, and also just thank our staff, all of our staff, and our entire community, because this is the first time that we publicly discuss our A- to G completion rate. And so, the fact that we saw 6% increase in A- to G completion rate is something that I think particularly in light of the FICMAT report should also bring some hope and inspiration and motivation to our district as well. So, I want to thank all of our staff that, who have put countless hours in making sure that more students have the opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. And it's a good reminder, as we focus on the structural deficit, that we cannot lose sight of a laser focus on student achievement as well. Item 10.0, consent agenda. Item 10.1, actually, we're going to vote on the consent agenda. We don't have our student board member preferential vote tonight. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstain? Okay. The motion carries. 11.0, business and financial information reports. 11-1, the monthly suspension report, which we will receive. Do we have any public comment on that item?
Yes, we have a public comment from Cecile Nunley with attachments.
And thank you, Ms. Nunley, for leading the work to ensure that this was included in our monthly analyses.
All right. Thank you so much. And I want to say thank you to the board, and especially to Trustee Wu for really requesting this. This has been something that, as you know, I kept asking board meeting after board meeting. And I think it's so critical that this information be made available. Now, did I do the overhead or not? Because there was one issue that I did have on the report. There's a statement here, and it says suspension rate. However, when you look at the columns, there was no suspension rate, and you couldn't easily see that. So, I did talk to Mr. Harris about that, and they realized that there was a hidden column or something, so they're going to make that information available, which I think is critical. I went on ahead, and being Cecile, probably being a little bit more anal than other people, and I went and I actually did the calculation, and then I said, "Oh, maybe it would be good if I actually presented it to the board." So, then I did it. And one of the things that sticks out on this, especially when you look at ethnicity, and you have all of the different categories there, the one that I highlighted in the red that sticks out, obviously, is that 9% on the rate of suspensions. Now, it wasn't on the report that's in your packet, but when I did the math, it comes out at that 9%, and there's nobody even close. There's no other group that's even close. They're clearly at least four times, at least three times, almost four times, so many of the other groups. And then, what I realized on all of the data was there's a rate of unduplicated, is what I call it. So, those students, just sheer number of students that are getting suspended, and again, African-Americans are sticking out because they're at 6%, and there's only two other groups that are even at 2%. So, that became critical. And then, of course...
And obviously, this is a top-level focus of our African-American Achievement Initiative, as it rightly should be.
Yes. And then, the other one, and I know, program and foster youth, and foster youth is, again, off the charts. And I think those are critical, those are especially high-need students, and we're talking counselors and those things. And I just think it's important that it's before the board, and I probably will be pulling this off every single board meeting that it's presented and asking questions about it.
Keep us focused. I appreciate that. Item 12.0, future board meetings, dates and locations. Our next board meeting will be held on January 17th of 2019. We may need to reassess that, given the presentation tonight from FICMAT and the urgency with which Mr. Feins requested that we act. I would like to, before the motion of adjournment, recognize that Oak Park lost an incredible community leader, lovingly known as Cactus Ray, the unofficial mayor of Oak Park. He was a steward of the community, a volunteer at our school sites, and an incredibly kind and genuine man, and we lost him to cancer about a week ago. His funeral services will be on Sunday, and I expect that the community will shower his family with love. But, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn in his memory tonight. All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. We will adjourn.